City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Adamchek?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Motta?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Will you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. July 2027, 2024, is being declared National Day of the Cowboy. We have several representatives from the Flint Hills Discovery Center here tonight. May I be joined at the microphone by Stephen Brederstein, the interim director; Sally Drier, curator of education; Mary Hildreth, guest services; and membership manager and Jonathan Mertz, event supervisor. Whereas pioneering men and women, known as cowboys, helped establish the practice of cattle ranching along America's frontier in the 19th century. And the cowboy embodies honesty, integrity, courage, compassion, and determination. And the cowboy is an excellent steward of the land and its creatures. And cowboy traditions have long been part of the American landscape. And the legend of the cowboy came to life on the Kansas prairie during an era of the great cattle drives. And whereas the work of the modern cowboy is honored by the Flint Hills Discovery Center, and a local celebration of the National Day of the Cowboy will be held in Manhattan, in the Manhattan area during 2024, a National Day of the Cowboy has been designated by the United States Congress and the governor of Kansas to be celebrated on the Fourth Saturday of July. Now therefore, I, Susan E. Adamchek, Mayor of the city of Manhattan, do hereby proclaim July 27, 2024, as the National Day of the Cowboy in Manhattan. And I encourage all citizens to observe the day with appropriate ceremonies and activities. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Manhattan to be affixed the 16th day of July 2024. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Looking forward to you then?
Yes.
Should be great event.
Thank you so much for the proclamation. We very much appreciate it. My name's Jonathan. I am the event supervisor at the Flint Hills Discovery Center. And National Day of the Cowboy is one of our longest-running annual events at the Discovery Center. We were talking about it, and we think we've done it since the very first year of the Discovery Center, or at the very least, the next year after that. And it's a great, popular event that's great for the families. And we're going to have a lot of our usuals, the carriage rides, they will be ending early at 1:00, so please get there early. We have these lovely hats, and the first 250 children will receive a free hat. We had enough, and since we know they're youth at heart, we brought some for the city commissioners. And then we're also going to have the food trucks, a mechanical bull. We partner with the K-State Rodeo Club, so they're going to be there with a roping activity, and of course, arts and crafts. And we'll have live music in our atrium during the morning and into the early afternoon. So I hope you're all free and can join us a week from this Saturday at the Flint Hills Discovery Center for the National Day of the Cowboy. And thank you.
Thank you. This is the opportunity for public comment on items not related to a specific agenda item. No one has signed up previously. Is there anyone who wishes to make any remarks now? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Commissioner comments? Jamie, anything?
So it's been a weird couple of weeks. We're going to have some difficult conversations here in the next couple of months. I am one of the younger ones on this commission, but I've still been through a lot in my life. One thing I've learned is that the sun will come up tomorrow, and we've all got to really rely on our neighbors. And I think that's more important now, to remember that we are all neighbors in this community. And we have to, from this table to everyone sitting out there, to everyone at home, have to remember that we are all working for the betterment of our community. And if we can keep that in mind, you know, the decisions that we make, you know, tonight, a couple of weeks from now, you may not agree with them, but please know that we are trying to do the best that we can, and we are all humans, and none of us is more human than the other. So let's just rely on each other and rely on our community moving forward.
Great. I had a grandson in town, and he participated in the cardboard canoe race at the swimming pool this week, and it was really, really fun. I think I'd like to thank Gail Urban and the Park and Rec Foundation, and our very own Aaron Stewart. I understand you didn't build that structure, that you had the lifeguards build your structure. But he was very, 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 very open about his punishment, which was to jump the plank, and he jumped off the 10-foot board and did a really, I'd say, 9.2 cannonball. So anyway, it was really fun, and the funds go to the foundation. And we really applaud the work that they're doing. The other thing, this is just a heads up for anyone who's interested. The regional planning organizations, which we meet around at various places, but it's meeting in Manhattan this Friday. And we will, as part of the meeting at 10:30, we will be receiving this check for 1.5 million. Sadly, I don't think we can take it to the bank and get it cashed. But anyway, for brownfield remediation in Manhattan and surrounding areas. So if anybody's interested in coming and seeing a check that big, we'd love to have you.
Did you say where it's going to be?
Yeah, it's at the TDI building on McCall Road, 10:30.
I would just like to thank Commissioner Opelt for his remarks. I had planned to make a similar statement, but I think he stated my sentiments as eloquently as I could have myself, and so thank you for that. We are now at the point in the agenda where we address the consent agenda. These are items that are of a routine or housekeeping nature, or those items that have previously been reviewed by the city commission and may be approved in one motion. A commissioner may request that an item be removed for separate discussion and considered immediately following the consent agenda. Comment from the public related to any item on the consent agenda is allowed. Each person will be allowed one speaking opportunity of five minutes. Are there any questions or comments from the commission on consent agenda?
Yeah, Item E1, the Human Rights Advisory Board. More a question on the bylaws change that they're suggesting. I would say it goes against the policy manual resolution that was established in 2023, which standardized things, so I would like us to have more discussion on how we're handling that. Jared, is that you?
Yep. Commissioner, you're correct in the statement that it does deviate from the policy manual resolution that the commission adopted that standardizes all the bylaws for our boards and committees. The one you're referring to is, there's a statement within all the bylaws, and we've gone through a handful of these with our boards, and those have been approved by you. There's a statement related to the ability to call a special meeting. And in the standard bylaws and the policy manual that you all have adopted, it allows the board chair at the consent of the staff liaison to request a special meeting. And there's various reasons that you would need that consent from the staff liaison. A main, primary thing is because we need to provide, we need to follow the Kansas Open Meetings Act. We need to have a meeting room available that meets the ADA, that we can notice that special meeting adequately to the public. And then it is, you do want to call special meetings at the consent of the entire majority of the board, as opposed to one individual. Currently, our mayor doesn't have the ability to just call a special meeting, so this is actually giving a board chair of an advisory board more power, you could say, than any others do. So this is, you know, we've gone through this process where all of our boards are reevaluating their purpose statement. You have the ordinance in front of you today where it requires them to adopt bylaws. So if you all approve the first reading of the ordinance, you would, at the next meeting, be approving the second reading of the ordinance and the bylaws, or a variation of the bylaws given your direction. Because ultimately, it is the commission's discretion, as it is your advisory board.
So if we approve on consent tonight, on that one, the first reading, we're not actually approving that change to the bylaws, or?
No. So you'll be passing first reading of the ordinance, which creates the board. And that establishes its purpose, establishes, you know, how many members are on the board, when their terms are. There's a provision of that ordinance that says the board has to adopt bylaws. They have, you know, passed both the ordinance, the draft of the ordinance, that is, because they all don't pass the ordinance. But they've approved the draft of the ordinance and the draft of their bylaws. So if you approve first reading tonight, at the next legislative meeting, you would be approving the second reading of the ordinance and the bylaws. If the commission has, if a majority of the commission wants to give staff direction to make that provision in sync with your policy manual resolution, we can update that for the next meeting.
I mean, that's where I'm at. I don't know where everyone else is on that.
So, in previous bylaws, it said that it requires the majority of the board to call a special meeting? Because right now, it says that it's just the staff liaison or the chair.
The draft, the bylaws within our policy manual resolution, the standard approach is that a special meeting can be called by the staff liaison, or it could be called by the board chair at the consent of the staff liaison. So that coordination needs to occur, where one individual can't just call a meeting. And usually, the practice would be our staff liaison is going to work with the board individually to understand if everyone can make that meeting, if there's a suitable time. And you need to also evaluate the reason behind the special meeting, and if it can wait until the regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. All right, I think that makes sense.
I mean, I guess my direction, if others agree, would be to not make that change to their bylaws. But give them that direction, that that's something, but maybe I'm jumping the gun.
No, again, so this is at the commission's discretion, because it's your board, and you could direct staff that you don't agree with that change in the bylaws, which deviates from your policy manual, and you could give direction to city staff to adjust that section of the bylaws to reflect properly.
The policy manual resolution. That's the direction I would like to give. I don't know how everyone else feels.
I don't feel that strongly, but if you want to go that way, I have no problem agreeing with you.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I'm kind of the same way. It would make sense to go with the policy manual resolution. That's why we have them.
Yeah, and I think for consistency, we need to keep those as, when we start to deviate and have one-offs, that's where errors are likely to occur. And I think there's a lot of opportunity for risk when we start to move away from that.
Jared, is there any reason why the Human Rights Advisory Board might need to take action more urgently on a particular issue, and hence the need for a special meeting?
I don't believe so, that they are just truly an advisory board. So they're a board that meets to discuss things and make recommendations to you all. And again, it doesn't mean that a special meeting can't occur. This is in particular, is deviating from the policy manual resolution because it's saying that the chair can call the special meeting, and the staff liaison, and the board has to kind of go with that, which deviates from the approach. The staff liaison, if there's an urgent matter or something that, hey, example, something happened in the community, and we want to discuss this, the chair can reach out to the staff liaison, hey, I think we need to have a special meeting. They are a board that meets quarterly, so there may be a reason that they want to meet before the next three months. And that staff liaison is going to work directly with the board and the chair to find a time to get the meeting. But it doesn't, it wouldn't allow the staff liaison to just call a special meeting and pick a time and date.
Do we need to remove that item from the consent agenda if we are suggesting a change to it?
No, we can, as Jared said, we'll take that direction. And when you approve the bylaws at the next meeting, it'll reflect your changes.
Okay, thank you. I had, any other commissioners? I had a question on H1, the construction contract for Anderson Avenue Reconstruction Project. I just had a question with trying to tally the figures that are being reported there. It seems to me there was an excess of, and I'm sorry, I did back-of-the-envelope calculations and left that sheet of paper at home.
I did mine here, so. We're for both, definitely not math majors. Yeah, so that project is a reconstruction of Anderson Avenue from Reese to Seth Child. Bid about three weeks ago, bid for 1.61 million dollars. We do have some design fees, which aren't in that memo, about $300,000. Then we have some easement acquisitions, and then our bond fees. Total then, when you add up, 1.6 plus about $300,000 in design fees, about $50,000 in easements, and then some contingencies comes to that 2.0 million. The memo didn't have the design fees there.
Right. And I was wondering if some of that was interest or other?
No, so that is calculated into that interest, as well as fees on the bonding. But the big number that wasn't in that was $300,000 of design contract.
Great.
Passed, went to the commission maybe 18 months ago. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner?
I had a couple. I just wanted to note that I is a grant to approve purchase of snow removal for the airport, and that that total is over a million dollars. But luckily, the federal government will pay 90% of it. So the cost to Manhattan is only 100,000, I shouldn't say only, is 100,000. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was K, which is the community support funds. And I just wanted to say, this was Win Butler's idea, that you could add to your water bill or other things to support all kinds of social services in the community. And it has, people have done it, and it's a really positive, easy way to, you know, you can just add $5 a month or something like that. And it does add up when we all do it. So it was really Mayor Butler's idea.
It was a checkoff program, yeah.
The checkoff program. Thank you.
Any other commissioners' requests? Is there any public comment?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Brian. Any public comments on any items on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, is there a motion, we will close public comments? Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
The Commissioner Opelt has moved to approve the consent agenda. Commissioner McCullough has seconded. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchek?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Consider an interlocal agreement with Kansas State University for fire protection services and fire station headquarters ground lease.
Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. I'm going to facilitate this presentation and conversation a little bit, but we've got a lot of individuals in the room who've been working on this project over the last 20 years, or over the last two years, from our city manager's office, city attorney's office, fire department, Kansas State University, related to our ground lease where our Manhattan Fire Station Headquarters is located. This aerial is the intersection of Kimball and Dennison. And at the northeast corner is our fire station right here, along with our training grounds. This property is located on Kansas State-owned land. And in 1983, we entered a lease with them to utilize that land for our fire station. It expires here in 2034. So we've begun the process and went through a process to renegotiate and update that interlocal agreement with Kansas State University. You have here on this what we're calling the North Tract, which is where the training grounds are. Back in February of 2023, we did purchase land to relocate this existing training facility. And that is primarily because this is really well-established land within the North Campus Corridor that the university would like to utilize and have available in the future. And us understanding that, and our needs from a training perspective, one of the things that we negotiated within the updated ground lease and interlocal agreement is to relocate and vacate this site in 2028. This is the land that the commission authorized purchase of back in February 2023. This is our fire station 2, 3? 3. The land just south of that, that we would look to create a new training facility for our firefighters. Some specifics of the lease, it extends the lease another 50 years, so it would go through 2075. It addresses things like exterior improvements of Manhattan Fire Station Headquarters, you know, the look of the Edge Collaboration District. We want, Kansas State and the city have acknowledged the need to do some improvements to the exterior, so that it matches some of the foundation buildings and other commercial development that's happening along that corridor. The original agreement did talk about fire services. So when that agreement was created in 1983, it did stipulate that we would provide fire services to the university. At the time, the previous agreement did require an escalating payment from the university to the city to pay for fire services. The way that had been done over the last 40 years was, it started with, in 1994, when we created the City University Fund, which we're going to talk about later. But we would actually, and the City University Fund has generated revenues from sales taxes and franchise fees that occur on campus. We would reduce a portion of that fire services contract from the transfer from the general fund to the City University Fund when those receipts occurred. So all told, you know, today, that's around $225,000. And that's just escalated at about 3% over those years to get you to that number. This new interlocal agreement does not require the city to pay for fire services. So in essence, the City University Fund would just be receiving more money for its projects, and the general fund would be receiving less for its fire services.
Doesn't require the university to pay?
Yes. Yes, excuse me, the university would not pay for fire services, yep. But right now, that is happening through the City University Fund process. Doesn't require the city to pay rent for the land. We have had, we had a discussion item with you all back at the beginning of the year, in January, with an update on the negotiations of this lease and talked about these provisions. We also talked about some of the future improvements that come with this. Obviously, the relocation of the training facility to the Amherst site. We've looked at estimates with that of about $5 million for those improvements. The Fire Station Headquarters building is over 50 years old. There are just deferred maintenance and improvements that we need to do to that facility. Not only the exterior improvements, but also things like replacements to floors, roofs, HVACs, windows, plumbing. And we've gotten preliminary estimates on that of about $3.5 to $5 million for those improvements. We do anticipate, and have discussed with you all in the previous discussion items, utilizing the bond and interest fund for those projects as the financing mechanism. So the action requested tonight is to approve that interlocal agreement with Kansas State University and extending that ground lease through 2075 with those provisions that are outlined. Happy to answer any questions?
You said we were talking about using bond and interest to pay for those fire department, the headquarters and the training facility?
That's what we've identified in our discussions. Obviously, as we progress in design and possible construction at those facilities, we're going to bring those back to the city commission for your approval and direction on funding sources and strategies.
Yeah. Be nice if we had a, where you could put some money away, a little bit at a time, pay cash for those, since, you know, they are long-term projects, and we see them coming down. I don't know if we can try and figure that out this year, but I think for future budgets, I would really like to try and have some type of capital improvement fund that we can use for things like this. It just doesn't get funded.
Yeah. Do you have the body to bring up the whole thing? Because I think, quite frankly, it's a pretty darn sweet deal for the university. And looking at some of the things that we've agreed to, KSU desires the city to complete improvements within two years. The exterior improvements, why do we have to have exterior, I mean, it's a fire station. I'm sorry if it doesn't look like the foundation buildings, but it is a fire station. I know I'm not against improving the interior for the staff and that kind of thing. But go down to 6B. It's just, I mean, we are providing fire services for the cost of not paying rent. I don't know what that property would be for rent. 6B, yeah. It says that the city must purchase specialty equipment. Can you kind of make that bigger? You know, when we did this in 1983, the university was significantly smaller, and we had significantly less serious kind of research being gone, with a level-three lab and a level-four lab. And I'm sure Anbeth has many of its own capabilities to deal with fires. But still, we have the Pat Roberts Lab. We also have a number of grain elevator things, which can be very serious fires if something like that happens. So to say, the parties further acknowledge that the city's provision of fire services require the city, at its expense, to purchase and maintain specialized equipment and vehicles to fund specialty training and personnel. Similarly, the university's provision of land for the city's headquarters and other improvements benefits the city. The party shall agree, the city shall not pay rent, and the university shall not pay for any expenses. I think we need to step back and say, what are we agreeing to till 2075? You know, just a fire truck costs you a million dollars. Do we need to have higher ladders? Do we need to have, you know, when it says we have to provide the specialized equipment, I've got some real problems with that. I just don't feel that we're, this is reciprocal. I think, like, we're doing a lot, and then using the city/university fund to pay for it in the years past, I think has also been against the general agreement in 1994.
Karen, I would agree with you on a number of your points. Several months ago, I had a briefing, as I'm sure most of us did, with the director of the KSU Foundation, and I raised some of those exact same points. Why are we? Why are we being required to do exterior improvements and renovation? Why are we being required to purchase specialized equipment and vehicles in order to respond to the potential for events on the university campus? It would seem to me that there should at least be an opportunity for cost sharing or a grant opportunity. If it's, if the university is desirous of the fire station looking attractive in the same way that the foundation buildings do, which are, have been built forty years later, I think it would be incumbent on the university to talk to us about a partnership.
Mayor, if I may?
You may. Thank you.
Ryan can talk a little bit about specialty equipment, but if Jared can scroll to the language, the university is not requiring us to make investments in the exterior of the building. They express a desire for us to do so, and full discretion is at the City Commission to make those improvements. That language was in there as a part of the negotiations. They were allowed to express their desires, but it is fully at the discretion of the commission. Ryan, can you expand upon what specialty equipment today you have that is only for, or specialty for, the university that would not apply anywhere else in the community? It was my impression we didn't have any. We have other structures in the community of height and nature that require us to have this equipment, but feel free to expand, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ryan Alms, Deputy Fire Chief. Yeah, I think that's accurate. I don't know that there's any equipment we have that's specific to Kansas State University. I think maybe, maybe early on when this was signed, the buildings at K-State may have dwarfed maybe what exists outside of the university. I don't think that's necessarily the case today. The one exception that I believe we would still have, but we are amped up for, or ramped up for hazmat response at the university with the labs and for MBAF. And, but a lot of that's funded by the state of Kansas because we are a regional hazmat team, and we entered into that back in the nineties to become a regional team, and they provide, not our hard infrastructure in terms of vehicles, but they provide most of our monitors and suits, that sort of thing.
The current agreement we have with the university goes through 2034. If the body does not want to enter into this agreement, we're looking for that direction tonight. We started these negotiations probably six or seven years ago. We bought land off Amherst in an attempt to relocate the training ground. We recognized we needed four or five years at one point in time and put 2028 in here, probably in 2023. But this agreement is trying to replace an agreement that is about a page and a half and does have handwritten notes on it. It's not adequate for the long term. We recognize and talked with the commission in the past about maintaining our presence at this intersection. We acknowledged with the university, with the presence of MBAF, that the intersection has extreme potential. And did they suggest that we relocate the entire headquarters somewhere, or would we anticipate that potentially in 2034 at the expiration of the lease? So those conversations were had with K-State administration. They didn't desire us to leave. They recognized they needed service on campus, and we recognized an investment we made in the site fifty years ago. If we don't like the terms and we don't want to approve this this evening, we're looking for that direction. But this has been in the works for several years. I'm not saying it has to be signed tonight, but it is a result of multiple years, multiple rounds of feedback from both the commission and Kansas State University to reach this point.
I guess the thing is, if you're saying that we don't have to do those improvements, that that language doesn't force us to, that kind of takes that issue off the table, because we can just decide if we want to do them or not. But I think it would be nice to know what is the market rent that we would be paying as opposed to the cost of fire service for the university? Is there a big disparity there, considering they don't pay property tax, because, so that's an awful lot of coverage that we're doing?
I appreciate those comments, Commissioner Motta. At the same time, we have a lot of property in Manhattan that doesn't pay property taxes that is served by Manhattan Fire Department. I recognize when we annexed Kansas State University, there were a variety of topics discussed, some twenty, almost thirty years ago. Those circumstances obviously have been in existence now for thirty-plus years. It's, again, when we look around to other communities, we see municipal fire services being provided to those universities. On a rare occasion, we see universities participate in specialty equipment that isn't required anywhere else within the community. That's a situation we found ourselves in, as Ryan described probably at the beginning of this. It has evolved. The evolution of jobs and students at K-State are well beyond when we entered into these contracts as well. So the circumstances being as they may, if, again, if there's direction to go renegotiate this, we're looking for that this evening. But I appreciate the comments. All the comments and all the subject matter have been brought up previously. We've engaged with the university. This is where we're at with the negotiations at this point.
One thing I might add, just for some thought, is, you know, what our alternative sites for a headquarters would be and the cost of building a brand-new building? I think that also needs to be included in our calculus when we're talking about what's the cost, what would be the cost of the rent, is that if we don't do this here, we gotta build a brand-new building. We gotta find a location to put that building, and who knows where that's gonna be, what that's gonna cost? You know, this is a very good location, especially considering the infrastructure investments we've made into the roads surrounding the location. From what I've been told from, from the fire department, it's really easy to get trucks in and out of. It's, it is kind of on the, on the north, or west edge of town, but it's still right on major arteries and it has a very good response radius, I guess. So, you know, it's not just that we've gotta spend some money renovating the headquarters, but our alternative is completely moving it and, and building a new training facility. So...
But they did point out that it might need 3.5 to 5 million dollars to renovate it. I think we could build a new building for that. I just feel that we're not being fiscally responsible to the city by signing off. I, I think John's right. What is the value of that space and what should we be putting into the equation? Also, the loss of the north part of the property is going to lose us a lot of parking, and one thing we have in that building is public space for public meetings, and now there isn't going to be adequate parking for those, those people who want to come there and have meetings. I don't know if that'll also limit the kind of training we can do there, because we won't have adequate parking, but we're losing a lot of space there. It just seems to me that this is just too nebulous. The fact that we, you know, that it must be at our expense to purchase special, specific equipment. I have no idea what the university is gonna ask us to do in the future, but I do know that since 1983, or 1985, 1995, the university has doubled in size and probably the amount of fire protection they need, as is noted with the fire at Hale. That's a pretty significant event, and so that's, that's kind of where I am. And one more thing, I hate, Jason, don't just say, "We've been at this for seven years and we can't change." Let's talk about doing this in a way that makes everybody happy. If we end up with exactly the same thing, that's fine, but I don't remember ever being asked about this specific thing.
So, hmm, sorry, we exchanged a lot of emails about this today. I'm trying to figure out where I want to go with this. So I do think that exterior thing, which we can make those decisions later on the exterior facade, I would want to encourage us to make sure that when we're seeing, if we go forward with this, when we're seeing proposals, that we're seeing ones that maybe a more drilled-down version without the fancy facade work. I think that that'll be an important evaluation. The part that I'm not comfortable with would be that two-year timeframe for things to start if we move forward on this, that we would have to, I don't remember if it said start or finish construction in two years. Jared did say, I think, start in two years. Just, complete improvements. So really, realistically, in the next three years, we're engaging in about $10 million worth of changes between the training ground and this. With that being said, a lot of these things were going to need to happen eventually. The training ground eventually, we, Ryan, I'm assuming at some point, we'd have to make improvements to the training tower. I'm not saying three to 5 million dollars, but there would be.
We originally started, the fire department was first exposed to changes to the interlocal agreement in 2015, when we were considering Riley County EMS coming. And so we have, to our building, that was when the hospital still had them, and they were looking for a home, and we considered expanding the headquarters' fire station to accommodate Riley County EMS as well. And so for those ten years that, that we were, since then, we have, anything that was, that we thought we would end up losing, we have not invested in. And so concrete is a prime example. That pad is falling apart, the tower is falling apart. We didn't invest money in it because we weren't sure what the future held for us. We looked at alternative sites, we looked at what it would cost to build new, and, and there wasn't any good options, so we didn't invest in that. So we still would have had some costs regardless. We probably would have spaced them out if we knew we had it all along and we're gonna keep it.
So I didn't, I didn't look fully at the plans for the training ground. That, that new space, though, is significantly larger acreage-wise than what it currently sits on.
Yeah, we have about one, a little over an acre of concrete where we currently sit. It's about, the whole site's just over two acres. This site on Amherst is nine acres. So there's, there's a lot of advantages for us. Chief French has talked about them in the past. One is just the ability to spread out and the ability to have things that remain in place. Cars is a good example. We have cars for vehicle extrication. We're constantly moving cars in and out and cleaning the pad off for different activities, whereas space like this, we've seen what other people are doing and able, able to spread out and utilize the space better.
So just going back to the location then of the fire station, I, I do think that that is the most prime location for the city. Ryan, I don't know if you, you probably can't pull up the chart where it shows the different, like, zones for things, but I think from a coverage of the city, I know you would be quite restricted on where you could feasibly move that and still have the appropriate coverage, and we don't have to dive into that, but I think when we are discussing it, trying to know, like, when we're saying, where else could we go? I don't know if there is anywhere. I don't know if we've studied what the other things are. I would actually venture to guess it would be much more expensive to build a new fire station. I do want to clarify, it, it's headquarters because the, like, your offices are there, the chief's offices are there. That's what makes the headquarters, not the, the location.
And risk reduction.
Yep, we have risk reduction as well there, and then the meeting rooms, as Commissioner McCullough stated.
And then to speak to the equipment, I would feel more comfortable if it was specialty equipment for K-State. That's not a deal breaker for me. I think realistically, what's gonna happen is it's not gonna be specialty equipment, it's gonna be volume of equipment, and we're gonna, you know, as K-State expands, we may not have the flexibility to move vehicles and trucks the way we might otherwise, because we have to staff in certain ways based on their building. So not necess, I'm not necessarily concerned about having to have specialty equipment for K-State, more of just the volume that we may have as the, the city grows. I don't know how we would be able to establish what was university-required versus city-required. I think it'd get difficult, but if there is a very specific piece of equipment because of construction, I would like the ability to review that. With that being said, those, the, the part for me that's challenging is the timeline that's been put on it with the construction, that we're not making this decision because of a budgetary, like, we're not saying this is budgetarily when it's most appropriate to do it. It's, I feel like we're kind of, our backs are against the wall that we're gonna have to enter into another $10 million project. We've talked about Station Six. I get that's not happening right now, but I feel like luck would have it, that we would then be having to engage in that, which is not, I say that like a negative thing overall, having to add another station because of growth and economy is not, is not the negative. I personally would support this agreement, I mean, with the accept that two years deadline for construction is, is a sticking point. I'm coming at it, though, I haven't been involved in those conversations. I mean, I've been in the conversation for six weeks now, so not, not knowing what that, that timeline may have been, you know, maybe we're shovel-ready, ready to go now, and that's not really a big deal. I also don't know a construction timeline and all of those things.
We do have a design team that's looked at those specific improvements that we've talked about along with the training site, so it has started.
But we have no funds for it at this point, right?
We have...
We have not set aside funds to expand that area. We've looked at, we know what we want to build there, but there's no funding for what we want to do. Am I right?
When you identify the bond and interest fund as a fund that would, if you debt finance that, that fund is healthy and can assist.
You have to pay the bond and interest fund, too. I mean, that's debt, and this commission is looking at some serious issues in the budget this year, and I don't see a lot of wiggle room to say, okay, we're gonna put out a million dollars for the fire station, you know, activities.
The requirements of this agreement are to move that training ground by 2028. There are a lot of suggestions in this agreement about things taking place by certain times, two years. Those are not hard and fast. This governing body has the discretion to make those improvements and to build a new training ground. That you don't have to do that. By 2028, you need to vacate the northern half of this per this agreement. That is pretty much your only obligation.
Not 2034. If we say we're not, we're not gonna sign this.
If we're not gonna sign this, we're not gonna enter into anything before 2034.
I mean, I was just like, speaking realistically, if this didn't come up, we have both of those spots till 2034, and then we have nothing.
Correct.
So we do have somewhat of a deadline anyways. We can't control that K-State wants the North Tract. The option we also could have is, we don't have to build a training ground. I mean, that, that's pretty extreme. I'm not suggesting that. I was making the point that, like, those are options within our control, that if they come in 2028 and take that, I guess the other option is to not have one. Or we could wait till 2034, but we're gonna have to spend the money by 2034.
Jamie, I think we do have to have a training ground so that...
I agree with that, Karen.
No, I mean, just so, I mean, we, just, I mean, we have no option on that, but I, I'm, what I think you and I are both looking at is the time span here and how we can maybe phase this in and perhaps have a little more support from K-State for, I mean, they're kind of getting free, I realize that that land is valuable, but it's, it's a pretty good deal, really. And, and should we not perhaps, as the fiscal responsible commission, be asking, couldn't the deal be a little bit more in our favor?
Yeah, just to point out, I also... Yeah, just to point out, I also, I also think I know how construction goes and delaying anything too far. We're gonna increase the cost of the training tower or the, I don't know if it's a tower. I didn't look at what it looks like, Ryan.
Well, we currently have a training tower that's like five stories and we have a burn building also. Um, we would probably not go back with that, that same design, uh, because the concrete building doesn't allow us a lot of flexibility in training. So we'd probably go with something that's metal, uh, but we'd still want something that had a relative amount of height that we could uh, do the same kind of training that we do at the current site.
So to me, that's money we were already going to have to spend by 2034 at the latest. So the, the training ground personally for me is not the issue. The timeline moves up a little bit, which I think it's, you know, I, I don't know what the cost would be in 2034 to build a similar thing to what we're proposing and how much cost would escalate. For me, if we don't have to, to make the building, if we have the discretion to, on the, I don't mean on the aesthetics. If, if we have the discretion on how much means is being spent to improve headquarters, I'm feeling more comfortable. I wish it wasn't having to get done in two years, but.
I just want to point out, the, the two years is the university desires for the city to complete exterior improvements to the existing HQ within
Desires, desires.
Desires for the exterior. So that's not the entire renovation having to be done in two years and that is a desire. So it's not legally binding and it is the exterior part, which is probably the cheapest part of the entire project. I, maybe, I, I'm just, I'm just assuming. Um, and, you know, I don't know if we need to put purple neon around the outside or what, but, um.
But I don't understand, you know, why, why we should even have to improve the outside. I mean, I, I think I want the fire people to have good space and the code people and the, you know, but, uh, I'm just, I don't understand. I'm sorry if KSU desires the city to complete improvements within two years, but I don't think we have the funds. And I think, I'm, I can't see signing this. Why don't we look at what other universities are doing with their fire departments and see if there's not some more reciprocal money coming back and forth. And I know you do have hazmat support from the state, but I've sat in on some of those tabletops when we talk about what ifs. And there's just a lot of things that could go wrong with level three and level four labs and grain elevators. And I think we do have to have, um, special equipment to deal with those things, or we should at least. That's just where I am.
But tonight, I guess our, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if I remember correctly from when I toured the fire station, a number one comment that, um, Chief French made to me was that some of those exterior improvements are in fact necessary because it's some roof leakage.
Yeah.
Um, there's sidewalk upheavals that's impairing the, um, ADA accessibility. Am I remembering that?
Yeah, that's a great point, Mayor. I was, I was getting ready to jump in. There's a, uh, there's part of the exterior, um, improvements that were probably aesthetic in terms of, um, garage doors, although there's a functionality issue with, with 40-year-old garage doors and some lap siding, but a lot of it was the front entryway, which is not ADA accessible, which for us has always created, uh, some heartburn. Uh, considering we are the ADA enforcement arm in the city. Uh, we do have an ADA, um, accessible entrance, but it's in the back of the building, uh, in the back corner. And we have lifts, uh, inside, uh, chair lifts that are outdated and we can't get serviced. So some of those exterior improvements, the atrium's a good point. Every time it rains, we get the five gallon buckets out. Those storefront, uh, that, that kind of glass atrium has been on the, on the need to be replaced for quite some time. So part of that is a new ADA accessible entryway and redoing that, that glass up front that, that really needs to be replaced. So I think it was between 1.8 and 1.9 were exterior, uh, improvements. And, uh, many of those are related to a vestibule that goes over the risk reduction, uh, front door. Cause currently you just open the door and you're in the office and then, uh, that front entryway where the atrium is, that's where a lot of that cost was tied up.
But I, I mean, today's agreement is not, is not about the cost of, uh, any of those pro- I mean, it, it is about the future spend and by future, a shorter future than I think any of us up here were looking at. Um, not, not necessarily looking forward to, or thinking of that in 2028, but really it's, it's about the agreement, not about the, the money at this time. So when it boils down to that, they're going to be taking the north track either in 2028 if we sign this or in 2034. And to me, that, I mean, that's really the only, has to change in, in the whole agreement when it really goes down to it.
Yeah, I think, you know, this agreement doesn't obligate us today. We are not obligated to spend any funds. I do hear your concern Karen about, you know, what if some lab goes in to the university that is highly volatile? And, you know, we've got to have, I don't know what, um, you know, we can't really tell the future and what's going to go in now or what's going to go in in the future. I would lean towards trusting the fire department when they say we have the necessary equipment to deal with what we currently have. So
But we are signing something that says that expenses must be the city, at the cities, um, for specialty equipment. And I, I just don't think this, this, um, I mean, I've got to represent the city here, not the university. I'm very supportive of K-State, God knows, but I don't think this is in balance, very favorable to the city, this agreement. I'm sorry.
What would make it more balanced to you?
Well, I think, I think to look at a rent. Uh, I mean, I'd look to a cost for the city for fire protection. And I have no problem with the, the moving, I mean,
Cost to university.
Cost to university, yeah. Um, thank you. Um, I just, you know, it's, it seems to me this is, I, I'd like to have our new city manager look at it, quite frankly. I'd like to put it off for a couple of months and see, have, have a fresh person with fresh ideas look at it. Cause I think basically we've been mulling it over with the university legal team for, you know, it's just gotten on and on. And maybe we just need to start over and see what other universities, cities do.
Jared, the, the way that city university fund, so there was $225,000 that was, hmm, say that again, how it have, it's kind of hard because the next conversation is city university funds. I
Yeah.
I actually would have preferred them
This first.
In, in reverse order.
Let me pull up the, the forecast just so you can understand how our city university fund works. It's somewhat complex. Not very straightforward.
Yeah, that's super clear. Thanks.
So, the city university fund revenues that it are generated from campus franchise fees, this is your line three right here. That's a direct number that we get and we transfer into the fund because we get those actuals that come in and we know that exactly and we transfer it in. Campus sales tax is a little bit different. You know that we receive our sales tax receipts from the state of Kansas in a lump sum. Over the course of, you know, a year, the campus, Kansas State is calculating how much sales are occurring on campus. And we do a calculation to know how much sales tax was generated on campus. So typically we're budgeting a certain amount. You could see back in pre-COVID, that campus sales tax, one cent was generating over $300,000. It dipped in 2020 and 2021 and it's rebounding now. That is always through a transfer. So we transfer money from the general fund based on that budgeted and actual sales tax amount into the city university fund. Before we do that, we subtract this line right here, which is the estimate for fire services. Back in 1994, when they, uh, agree, the annexation agreement occurred, I believe the number was $15,000. It's escalated over time for, in various ways. Uh, historically though, over the last 15 years, it's been at like a 3% escalation because our budgets for fire services increase annually. So we've increased that number. So you're basically back in, then this year, we're estimating that the K-State's going to generate $263,000 in sales tax. And we're going to subtract 224,000 of that, from that transfer. So we're only going to transfer a small amount into the city university fund. That is the payment for fire services that is occurring.
Right, we just retain that and
We're retaining money.
We have control over the city university fund.
We do.
So it's still, it's, it's more about the transfer of the mon- I mean, the money still stayed within the city, whether it was in the general fund or whether it's in the city university fund.
And we'll get to this in the next item, but
I do think it pertains to
The city university fund is at the full discretion of the city commission. So if you keep wanting to use the city university fund to offset the general fund, that is ultimately your discretion.
So we could essentially make the university's payment for fire services ourselves if we wanted to do that.
That's what
Yes.
Cause again, it, it's at your discretion. It's your fund. It's not anyone else's money.
Jamie, you look poised for a remark.
No, I'm just, I, we haven't resolved the interlocal agreement, but it, it bleeds so much into that city university fund. I mean, I, I keep gain, I, I will be honest, when we started this and when I read through it in the packet, I was not comfortable with the interlocal agreement. Um, just with some of the working, I know Katie tried really hard to explain to me five times that it's like the, you know, we don't have to do the, the renovations as they're, you know, it's more suggested, which honestly, if it's suggested, then why is it even in there? But we're not going to, I'm not going to split hairs on that one. I'm getting more comfort with this because to me with the, the payment for it is what's changing, but it's not really changing because they're both funds within the, within our control, um, either way. I'm getting more comfortable with the, with, with the interlocal agreement. I don't know where everyone else is. I do, I do want to recognize that equipment portion. Um, for me, that's not, I don't, I don't know if that's a big enough reason to, for me to hold up the contract, knowing that I think it would be very challenging to try to decide what equipment was for university and what equipment was for city. I also want to recognize the significant benefit that K-State has to the city overall on everything, I mean, jobs, revenues, all of those things. This is money that I do think we were going to spend eventually. It's just on a, that's not what we're approving tonight, but the overall spend is just on a more accelerated timeline than I, I would have originally hoped.
I, I agree. I think that was part of my concern also. Not wholly understanding the legalese involved. Um, it's kind of difficult for me to approve a document like this, put my signature on it when it's, yeah, it's in here, but we don't really know for sure if we're going to pursue this or we're not really sure when we're going to do it or the university desires that we do something. I mean, it's, it is getting into
Monkey.
It's getting monkey, yes.
I think one confusing thing though is, um, the monies that come to us from sales tax and other things are not the university's monies. There are monies.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, you know, what we're saying is we're going to collect this much money and then we're going to pay ourselves back in the fire department with the money that's already ours, but the university doesn't need to put anything into the pot. I mean, I, I don't know what's fair and I don't know how much the land is worth that, that our fire, and I think Jamie's absolutely right. We've got to have that fire station and it's got to be there. So, but basically those aren't used in university funds. Those are
No, they're not.
Tax dollars that are coming to us and if we so choose to use them, um, to subsidize the university's fire services, that would be, well, worth talking about. That's not what we're doing here.
No, it's how the agreement's always been.
No, no, it hasn't. I mean, we've never said specifically that the city will use those funds for fire service. Originally it was supposed to be the city university firm, things that would benefit both the city and the university.
I mean, the, the fire, K-State has, they haven't paid us. We withheld, we've withheld putting money into the city university fund.
Which the city commission controls.
Historically, right. I mean, that's been the, the plan for
We've used city university funds
To pay, to put money, we've used city university funds
To pay the city
To offset the general fund for the fire service.
Yeah, Katie can correct me if I'm wrong, but this interlocal agreement, the one from 1983 explains in a very general term that the city, or that's, excuse me, the university pays for fire services to the city. It doesn't say how, it doesn't say what amount. I don't think it gets very specific. Flash forward a couple of years, we create the city university fund and the, and the university is annexed into the city in 1994. And then way back when, I think we outlined like $15,000 or something like that. And then over time, we have been using the city university fund to pay for that expense. And the city university fund is a fund that is controlled by the city. We set it aside to do projects that are mutually beneficial to the city. We've been doing that since 94. Sometimes we use that money on campus. Sometimes we use it adjacent to campus. But it's all city funds that ultimately you all approve and it goes into our capital improvement program. But we've taken money out of that fund and kept it in the general fund to pay for fire service to satisfy that provision over the last
Why are we even asking K-State to pay for fire service? I mean, it's, to me, it's kind of crazy.
We're, we're not asking them to, to pay for it in this new agreement.
We're not asking them to pay for it, but we're taking tax dollars, which, quite frankly
We're using it at our behest to offset expenditures in the fire department.
So if we wanted to, couldn't we create like a, something that says that we would continue to do that with city university funds? We would continue to make a withhold from the general fund or
Annually, that's going to be the governing body's decision.
That's what I, but they're
Cash basis, we can't do that. We can't, we can't make future commissions promise to that. But I, I mean, I just, I'm sorry, but, but why don't we just say the university doesn't have to pay for fire service? We're going to take care of them just like we take care of
That's what the new interlocal agreement says.
Well, and then forget about re-upping all this money back. We just have to look at the budget and see what we need for
I think this has just been a way to, and I could be wrong. I don't have that long experience on the commission that you do, but I think this has been a way to fill in some of the fire department's budget over the years.
Could very well be.
General
It just
General fund expense.
It's money in the general fund.
Some of which John
My hangup on it.
Yeah.
Please, go ahead.
My hangup was what I mentioned before, which we've been kind of banding about here, was giving them free fire service. But historically, we've always taken it out of the, um, city university fund. I don't think by doing this agreement, we should stop doing that. We should just continue to do that. And we continue to keep that money in the general fund. I don't think we should drop it out. True, other commissions could decide to do it differently, but that's their choice. They have to explain to the citizens why they're going to lose that 200 and something thousand out of the general fund because they want to go put it on projects. So to me, I'm comfortable with the agreement, with the understanding that we're just going to keep, we're not going to short the general fund. We're going to keep taking the money where we've always taken it from, which is the city university fund.
If, if I can clarify, uh, the 1994 agreement had between the city and the university, for the lease for the premises, had the university paying with university funds for fire services. It was not taken from the city university fund until 15, 16 years ago, and there was a policy decision to do that. The original agreement with the university paid was $10,000 for the first year. That amount was supposed to go up at the same percentage of any increase that the members of the fire department received in their salary. So if they got a 5% increase, then that amount went up. Over time, what I understand, this was a prior finance director, they, the city and the university didn't always know exactly what amount that would be. And over time, they decided to, instead of having the university pay pursuant to the interlocal agreement, they started taking money out of the ci- city university fund. So I just want to be clear, we have not always used city university funds. The record that we found was that was a policy decision made by administration The record that we found was that was a policy decision made by administration about 15 years ago.
Commissioner. No, thanks for that. I'd still stick to what I outlined.
Commissioners, I think we've had a fairly robust discussion on this. Are there any additional new questions or comments for Jared? At this point, we will receive public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to make any remarks on the interlocal agreement between the university and the city? Please sign in on the form and state your name and.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioner and Mayor. I am Ethan Erickson. I am the Vice President for Administration and Finance here at Kansas State University. I appreciate all the commentary and discussion this evening. I understand this is, we have been working very diligently with the city administration on how to adjust this, the fire services agreement and everything that underlines all of that. So hearing all the commentary, I appreciate all that. If we need to adjust some of the terms and conditions in terms of like the timeline, I understand that might have caused some consternation potentially. We can certainly go back and, and review some of those issues that have been brought up. Overall, I just want to continue to reinforce that the city and the, and the, and the university, we do look at this as a, as a key partnership between both of our entities and we work together as, as really closely on all this. So if there is consternation, we can come back and look at some of these pieces and, and would look, look to your, your guidance in some of those, those areas. So that's kind of what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. With no other remarks, we'll close public comments. Are there any additional queries for city staff?
I just want to make sure. I, I do support John's comment about what we can do to continue to keep those funds in the general fund. We don't do, we don't need to do anything about that tonight. No, Jason shaking his head no. Okay. I, I'm ready to move forward.
Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Kansas State University for fire protection services and the fire station headquarters ground lease?
I've got to say the whole thing? Motion to approve an interlocal agreement with Kansas State University for ground lease at 2000 Dennison Avenue and provisions for fire protection services to K-State.
And is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Minton has made a motion and Commissioner Opelt has seconded to approve the interlocal agreement with K-State for fire protection services and fire station headquarters lease. City Clerk, can you please call the, the roll?
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you. We will now move on to discussing the City University Fund.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just a discussion item related to the City University Fund, so no action taken tonight. Looking for a direction from the governing body for city staff to move forward with any recommendations that you have. We discussed this a little bit, but I'll go through the background again. Two things were established in 1994. One, we created an ordinance establishing the City University Fund, created through sales taxes and franchise fees generated on K-State property. As we discussed, this is a fund that the commission has the ultimate discretion in how we use at the end of the day. But we have created processes over time guiding how the city and K-State have worked towards using those funds. We also created an agreement in 1994 that created those annual processes. It established a timeline on how the city and the university would go about making recommendations for use of those funds. We did amend that agreement one time in 2014, just to clean up some of the timing and processes between the city and KSU, but nothing substantive there in 2014. It also creates what's called the City University Fund Special Projects Committee. It includes six at-large positions on three-year terms from the public, two K-State student positions that serve one-year terms and one faculty position that also serves a one-year term. Annually, that group meets maybe once or twice to review projects that have been proposed by the university and the city and make a recommendation to the commission to include those projects in the future budget year. Again, that recommendation that they make is, is just a recommendation. It goes before the City Commission, who again, has the ultimate authority to use those funds. And typically in the past, those projects have been included in the CIP. And then an annual project agreement is created and agreed upon at the beginning of the year that we'll discuss later. This is just a slide that outlines generally what's in that agreement from an annual perspective. In October of each year, typically K-State is providing those receipts to the city so that we can make that calculation like I described on how much actual sales occurred in the preceding year. In November, the city is providing Kansas State with revenue projections of that fund. So we're looking at that sales tax, at the franchise fees. We have a forecast of generally if that is remaining steady, if it's steadily increasing. So we let them know, all right, over the next two years, this is about how much money is going to be available for us to use projects. In January, we're usually approving, the commission is approving a City University Fund project agreement. And that stipulates how the funds are going to be used for that current fiscal year. So in the previous year, the commission would have been adding projects to the CIP based on that process. It's approved as a part of the annual budget. And then in January, the city and the university entered into this agreement on how the funds are going to be used. A lot of the times, there'll be a project that K-State is going to administer. So we outline in the agreement, okay, K-State wants to do this work on campus. We're going to give them those funds to do this project. Or it outlines in the agreement, the city is doing this project and the city is going to use those funds to do that project. So it outlines just those projects that are occurring. In February, the city and Kansas State are providing those recommendations to that City University Fund Committee. Internally, city staff is looking at the various infrastructure projects that would be mutual beneficial, mutually beneficial to the city and the university that we have in the queue that need a funding source. Kansas State's doing the same there internally, and Ethan can talk more about this, but they're going to go through their internal processes where they're meeting with their administration, students, faculty senate, a lot of groups on campus to identify projects that would be, could be used for this fund. And then ultimately, based on what we think the funding is available, we're making recommendations to that committee. They would hear those proposals typically in March and make a funding recommendation. It's, it was very rare, you know, over the last 10 years while, and this is pre-North Campus Corridor allocation, but that the committee would not recommend a project. One of the very few times, I think it was from 2016 to 2018, the, the city commission authorized use of City University Funds to pay special assessments for a benefit district at Colbert Hills. There was an argument of what is that mutually beneficial to the city and the university? The city commission thought it was. The committee recommended no, but the commission passed it anyway. Again, you all have the ultimate authority. So they make that recommendation and then in previous years, city staff would present those to you all and then we would include them in the CIP. And we do that generally every year. We paused the process in 2020 because of multiple reasons. COVID really stalled that. We weren't sure how much money we were going to be getting into the fund because sales tax and franchise fees are a big part of that. So there was an uncertainty there. We also had committed to accumulating City University Funds for the North Manhattan Avenue Project, which is almost near complete construction. This is the project along North Manhattan Avenue, north of Blomont Avenue that signaledized the intersections of Attier, Thurston and Bertrand. And did that consolidated bike lane. That was a large project and really kind of one of the first times that we used multi-years of funds to fund a project. Historically, prior to 2020, we were usually trying to use that 600, $700,000 that was available to do all those projects within a year. We also passed a resolution of intent with the university back in, I believe it was 2018, where $500,000 of the City University Fund would be committed annually through 2040, from 2020 to 2040 for the North Campus Corridor project. That coupled with decrease in revenue from COVID really limited the amount of funds that are available for the committee. So we didn't, we, we, we just weren't able to really follow the processes that I outlined in the previous slide over those years. We kind of brought that back up in 2023, but really those meetings were to, for that committee to meet once and approve funding to North Manhattan Avenue and funding to the North Campus Corridor. Not a lot of debate, not a lot of projects to, to talk about at those times. Generally, it's been difficult to maintain membership of that committee and keep them engaged. We, we've had even members, you know, feel like it is kind of a rubber stamp that they're just getting projects in front of them and they don't necessarily, that committee doesn't necessarily have a lot of input into it. Obviously, there's a lot of input going on, on campus that K-State is facilitating to create those projects. So that has been difficult to maintain. We did receive a letter of recommendation from President Lynton that we would dissolve that committee based on all of those factors. But we still, of course, want to keep the internal process that we do. K-State wants to continue to do engagement with their students, faculty and staff to identify those projects, utilize the fund. We, as a city, see a benefit with that too. You know, we understand that there are certain projects that it's hard to identify a funding source and this funding source has been available for a lot of those projects that we've identified adjacent to campus. So we would, we concur with that, dissolving the committee. We would recommend keeping the ordinance for 1994 that establishes the fund. We could repeal the 1994 agreement and then just create a new memorandum of understanding between the city and the university that keeps the formalization of those processes that I described in the previous slide on coming together, working with the right groups to figure out ways to use those funds that are mutually beneficial to the city and the university. I mentioned here, you know, we have that commitment of $500,000 to the North Campus Corridor through 2040. If you're not taking away money for fire services, that leaves about 250 to maybe $400,000 a year that you could use in the future if revenues are, are stable for those city/university related projects. And I'd be happy to pull back up that forecast sheet if you'd like to see that. But really looking for feedback on this process and then specifically if the commission is okay with dissolving that Special Projects Committee because that would allow the city staff and K-State staff to start working on those processes to repeal that agreement, but then establish a new agreement with them to create that internal process.
Thank you, Jared. Is there any comment from the public on this item?
Good evening again. Ethan Erickson, Vice President, Administration and Finance. So again, just want to echo and, and support what Jared has presented. The value that we have as a partnership between the city and the university on this particular effort is quite honestly in the, the continual engagement and dialogue that we have together as we work through this process. Jared mentioned the university's processes. Before, all of this was paused due to COVID and then obviously because we've had so much of the funds tied up in the North Manhattan Avenue Project. We do engage a lot with our stakeholders on campus as we look at potential projects that we might utilize or recommend for funding out of the Special Projects Fund. And so that would include our students, our faculty, our staff senates. We typically ask them for their feedback and input. And oftentimes, those are the same students and, and staff and faculty that are actually participating on that projects committee. So there's, there's multiple avenues that these individuals have had to provide opportunity, especially for the, the university's side of the process. And then obviously, we just have a great partnership with city staff and how we decide to come together and make ultimately joint recommendations that then go before the Special Projects Committee. So oftentimes, everything that we are presenting the last several years, we've already worked out and come to an agreement on individually between our two parties. And so I think from our perspective, this really sorts, is an opportunity to kind of streamline that process and further reinforces our partnerships that we have working together. So happy to answer any questions about the university's process or anything else.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions for Jared?
Yeah, maybe this is a, an idea whose time has come. We started this out and there was a lot of input from students and faculty. A lot of things we did were, were student safety, a lot of lighting on campus and that kind of thing. And then I, I feel like the 500,000 was just kind of sucked the life out of that that went to concrete on Kimball Avenue. I know that that's a real benefit to the students, but maybe it is. And then if we add the fires thing, we're really talking about $100,000 to divvy out for something. And, you know, maybe it's just time to take the sales tax and the other things that come from the university and put them in the general fund and have them there and not sort of spend a lot of time trying to find projects on campus that really were trying to nickel and diming those, those groups. There was a lot of enthusiasm for this initially and I think a lot of good things came out of it. But now that most of it's just going to North Kimball and things like that, there's not a lot of chance for cooperation.
Yeah, I agree with you, Karen. When I, when I first read this, I was a little concerned about, you know, the, the relationship between the city and the university. It seemed like a really good opportunity to have a lot of that cooperation and, and input and really collaborate. But sometimes relationships just stop becoming mutually beneficial or, or some activities in a relationship stop being necessary. I'm not saying that it's not mutually beneficial for us to, to do some of these improvements. But it does seem like it's kind of a moot point to have these, this committee. And I don't know if it's perhaps even the fund, but yeah, certainly, I mean, we've, we've got this committed. We don't have to spend that money every, we, we get to make that decision every year whether or not to, to uphold that commitment. But yeah, it, it, the decision was kind of made for us when that, when that commitment was made for 20, for the next 20 years. So I mean, i- if the university is asking for us to dissolve this and, and to kind of let us have, you know, overall, you know, just, just kind of let us have that control, I, I think it makes sense.
I agree in.
Yeah, I support dissolve.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I support dissolving the committee. We had some discussions before when we were looking at all the different boards. I think the staffs work well together and I think historically that committee was kind of like a rubber stamp for what went through and it just took more administrative time. And I do support continuing to use the money for paying for the fire, which means there's not going to be much money in there until that commitment's over with. So that's just another reason not to have a, the committee.
Thank you, John. I agree. I think this is what, streamlining the process, having a collaboration between university administration and city staff is sufficient for this type of program, for this volume of, of revenue that we're talking about. So this is a discussion item. We. item. We do not need to make a motion, but make a suggestion to the city, to city staff how to proceed. I would like to recommend that we do keep the ordinance for the time being, establishing the fund, that we do repeal the earlier agreement, and that we create a new memorandum of understanding that formalizes a process for allocating those funds.
I kind of feel like if we're not going to have student, if we're not going to have the committee, why are we having, I mean, this really was a citizens group that really spent some time, faculty spent time. And I can understand that the university finds this onerous at the moment because it's very little funds. But I think we should be putting this money in the general fund and budgeting out of that. And, you know...
Karen, I think it's an important, yes, it's not a large significant amount at this point for either entity. It would be helpful to have that money. But I also think it's symbolic of the relationship between the university and the community. I think there are probably grant opportunities, there are probably, that the university might enter into, where it would be helpful for them to show that there is a city commitment at some level to supporting their needs. That probably works both ways. I don't know where this would go with the International Town Gown Association, but there are organizations that could conceivably receive benefit from a intentional, ongoing relationship. And so that's why I would support having an MOU in place to solidify that cooperation.
Yeah, and I think having it in its own fund, it helps us diversify our capital improvement planning and our projects so that we're not seeing all this money just, well, it doesn't just sit in the general fund. But it helps us, you know, make sure we're looking across the community for our capital improvements. This is one of those funds. I mean, there's several others.
But the money's not just going to sit in the general fund, it's going to lower the property tax valuation. I mean, if we're looking for, I mean, I just, I just find this would be Anderson Hall telling us, well, this is the projects we've got, not coming from student senate the way it did, not coming from faculty senate the way it did. And I understand that because if most of it, if 75% of it is pretty much already allocated, then it's really a lot to ask people to spend a lot of time. And we've never been able to use, I've never seen this used for any kind of grants. Anyway, that's just kind of how I feel.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to keep the fund as a line item because, you know, in 16 years, our commitment for that will be over. And if we still have that line item, well, then maybe we can relook at, you know, revitalizing that committee. It's a long way down the road, but it would be, it's always going to be there as a reminder for us to do that in 16 years.
Yeah, or if that grows over a few years and we've got half a million dollars and want to say, hey, guys, let's get together and pull some other entities to figure out a plan.
Does staff have the away forward that you need from us?
Believe so. Yep.
John, do you want to make any additional remarks?
Nope, I'm good.
Thank you. All right, now that we're through the easy stuff, let's move on to general agenda item number C, consider multiple Aggieville improvement updates. The first item is to approve a relocation agreement with Evergy to bury overhead lines in the 1100 block alley between Morrow Street and Laramie Street in Aggieville.
Good evening, commissioners. We have multiple items concerning Aggieville this evening. We have a contract before you, from Evergy, and this is to bury overhead power within Aggieville. We have looking for some direction on 12th Street, really between Morrow and Laramie. Also looking for direction on consolidated trash within Aggieville. There's a pretty elaborate process. We need to, elaborate's probably not the right word, lengthy process we would need to follow to enact a municipally ran trash service within Aggieville. And then we also have the developer from Back Nine in the audience and can make comment or provide you all an update on where the private development is. Line relocation, this is for the alley between 11th Street and 12th Street. This is similar to the contract we entered into with Evergy and Larson to bury the overhead between 12th and North Manhattan. That project is still ongoing. The, part of that project is reconnecting all the businesses with upgraded service. BHS, also in the audience, has been part of our team down in Aggieville, helping facilitate that changeover in power and overseeing a lot of the construction that's taken place in the alleys in adjacency, public right-of-way adjacent to both Handy Corner and the Midtown project. So this evening, it's, we're asking for consideration on continuing to do the overhead power bury in the alley between 11th and 12th, just south of Morrow, between Morrow and Laramie. This is a project that we recognize continues to move Aggieville construction forward. It also gives us an opportunity to advance some improvements and get us to a point where we're ready when private construction actually takes place. Kansas Gas Service has been in the alley and it's made its improvements to allow for the space. Go ahead and bring up the GIS so we can see where we're at. The overhead bury has been part of the plan from the Aggieville Vision passed in 2016. This is a project that, again, creates an environment that's much safer and cleans it up from a pedestrian, pedestrian and vehicle and delivery perspective. We have four different alleys that were planned to be upgraded throughout Aggieville. This is the second that has overhead power that we'd like to bury. And it's obviously between these two blocks. This building has obviously been taken down here recently. The overhead power bury would create quite a boring and, or really a trenching opportunity in the alley to put sleeving in for the power lines themselves to be below grade. This project is in advance of another project we want to talk about this evening on 12th Street. We have public infrastructure that we would like to advance within the district. It gives us an opportunity to move forward with construction. The, we've been delayed now for a couple of years. North Manhattan, 14th Street, Laramie by the parking garage, we've completed. So we're roughly about halfway through the district itself. We have not initiated a public infrastructure project now in the district for a couple of years. We're on Fremont. Fremont's supposed to be wrapping up this fall. If it ever stops raining and returns Fremont to a street and not a lake, it has been very difficult to watch that project throughout the spring and summertime. And our storm this morning obviously didn't help much. But we'd like to get started on 12th Street. We have about a $5.2 to $5.7 million estimate for 12th Street. Cody Parrot is with Olson. He's here to walk you through some of the images, images from 12th Street. But we're looking for a direction to see if we can engage with the property owners and the businesses, finalize that design, and ultimately get a guaranteed maximum price from BHS later this year, early next year. The schedule and the timeline for construction would be starting in the spring of 2025. There's roughly about a six to eight month construction process that, again, would bring it from Morrow down to Laramie for construction. I'll stop there and look for questions before I turn it over to Cody so he can walk you through some of the improvements on 12th Street. The alley work, again, we've been delayed, waiting for some private development to take place. It doesn't appear as if Handy Corner and Midtown are in a position to move forward at this time. But we do see it as an opportunity to go ahead and bury that overhead power. Cody, you want to come up and talk to him a little bit about the improvements between Morrow and Laramie for us?
I have a quick question. So how, I understand we wanted to wait for the alley construction, I believe, so that we could kind of synchronize closing the alley with our improvements on the alley and then the construction on the lots to the south. Is that correct?
Yeah, the alley work, we recognized, wouldn't be complete until the private development was complete. So when their timeline was established and we thought they were going to get rolling here earlier this year, this overhead power bury, along with reconnecting the businesses and then ultimately finishing the alley as a public improvement, was coinciding with the completion of the private project.
Right.
12th Street, Laramie Street, same scenario. We were going to initiate those by early 2025. And then by really beginning of 2026, summer of 2026, we would have been wrapped up with all the public infrastructure in adjacency to Midtown and Handy Corner. We've obviously all read about and heard about the delays with both those private projects. So we're delaying Laramie construction at this point, but we feel like there's an opportunity to go from Morrow to Laramie on 12th Street and finish out primarily adjacent to the existing businesses that are there, but also set us up for Morrow, Morrow Street construction. There's critical infrastructure below grade in all these streets. 12th Street has a water line, significant storm, along with the street sidewalks, lighting, streetscape landscaping. And Morrow also has a very critical water line underneath it that has been a major impetus for why we're back in Aggieville, you know, if you want to talk about six, seven years ago, as far as the design goes. We knew we were going to rip up streets. We knew we had infrastructure we needed to replace. Morrow water line has been cut into and repaired multiple times. And our utilities recognize the life of that line is not very long, and we need to get in there and replace it. So I just hate to keep delaying all the infrastructure, knowing it is necessary. We don't anticipate a lot of renovation or new construction along Morrow. We also don't anticipate any renovation or new construction on the north half of this block. Bringing it to Laramie, there's ways we can prevent any type of new construction adjacent where Midtown and Handy Corner were, so it wouldn't impact the improvement on 12th Street. But we'd like to advance that so we can move to Morrow next if Laramie is not going to develop.
So is there a risk to doing this now instead of if and when some private development happens on that south part of the alley?
Not necessarily on the south half, just trying to take it as a block at a time. And the inconvenience of it all to the community, I'm going down the path of, we need to move on from a public infrastructure standpoint, where do we go?
Sure.
12th Street's ready to go. Laramie Street doesn't make a lot of sense to go put brand-new in, knowing those two half blocks on either side of 12th have an opportunity. But Morrow then becomes the focus from a design and the next phase of construction. If we pass on this and we pass on Laramie and we wait for the private development, we're going to focus our attention on Morrow. The scenario that I'm really worried about is Morrow being right at the onset of construction starting and the private development pops on Laramie.
Yeah.
And we're really inconveniencing the district at that point. But I'd like to get Morrow started, at least in a conversation, to where if the private sector development pops, we can halt, come down to Laramie, finish, and then go back to Morrow. It's kind of what we did with Triangle Park. We limped in there, got a few concepts, had some conversation, and then obviously, we headed down to 12th Street and Laramie to be adjacent to the development. We could go back to the park and start redesign and look at that construction with a little Morrow, or we can hop to Morrow Street itself between 11th and North Manhattan. Ultimately, I'm just trying to move these things ahead because they are impactful, they are inconvenient, and the longer we delay these things, the more comfortable everybody gets with the environment. And we need to keep inching these things along and incrementally making these improvements so we can get out of Aggieville eventually and have new infrastructure in place.
Jason, I think the only real concern I have is are we going to dig this up and then have to dig it up again? You know, that's, I mean...
Yeah, that's why I, you know, we've been talking with Olson and BHS about creating barriers or at least cushion adjacent to the lots that would redevelop. Because that's really, the sidewalks are what you may have to replace. I think we can keep access coming off Laramie and put it off and make that private development come off Laramie and tear up the existing. If we improve 12th Street, we wouldn't allow them to use 12th Street probably like we were going to. I'm real hesitant to just come to the alley with it. I think we'll impact those businesses twice. And I'd rather get through there. And BHS has put together a timeline in their packet. It's an attachment, I can open that. But it really highlights a pretty short window. They feel like they can get in there, get that work done, accommodate those businesses, and move on to the next phase.
Yeah, you know, I've talked to some of the business owners that are along there. And, you know, one of their biggest concerns was that there wasn't pedestrian access from the south. And you can't get to their business from Morrow Street like when we did, you know, the north, or yeah, the north side of 12th Street. You cannot access those businesses except for 12th Street. So I agree that we really need to minimize their impact and make sure that their businesses are still accessible and really only disrupt that one time.
Yeah, BHS, much like McCown did for us, I mean, they'll go in and tear the street out. They'll leave the sidewalks. They'll do all the work they can within the street, get all those subgrade infrastructure in place, and then they'll minimize that impact on the sidewalks. North Manhattan's probably our best example, Rockefeller, Varsity, all those businesses along there, very minimal impacts. And some of them didn't even have to close or shut their doors. They worked weekends and evenings to avoid that disruption.
Yeah. And I think, you know, the improvements that we're looking at doing, those are, these are the types of things that really, really spur a lot of activity in an area. You know, they just make it much more inviting to pedestrians, things like that. So yeah, I think the juice is going to be worth the squeeze. Let's just, let's just be careful with how we do it.
Yeah, and Cody and I have been on email strings with Mark Bechamp and the businesses over the last week. We got these concepts from Olson and Cody, and we sent them out to Kites, we sent them out to Annie May's, is it Fat Shack? Is that, yeah, Fat Shack, and the property owners as well, and just tried to get responses and feedback. And just tried to get responses and feedback. Got, got really good feedback, they'd like to look at a few new concepts for Cody to put on paper. But generally speaking, there was some concern about, you know, do we do this now or do we wait for the private development? I, again, I'm trying to get through this, so it's not 2035 and we're still tearing up pieces of Aggieville. I think we're at a point where we need to move forward. We know Moro, we don't necessarily have to wait. But if we can get this project done, it's another connecting link that's just complete before we get to Moro. I'll let Cody, unless you have any other questions for me, he can walk you through these 10 slides.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commission. This is really an update from what we saw previously, maybe a year ago, back when we had some crazy ideas about totally closing down 12th. Got a lot of feedback on that, all the hand drawn sketches, what we've developed these further now to include this 3D modeling and renderings here that give a better idea of the, the look and feel of what the intent and the vision for 12th Street could, would be. Understanding that there are a lot of subtleties or details that will still need to be worked out. But again, just an update of where we're at. So this is a plan view rendering showing the section of 12th with Moro to the left and Laramie to the right. This is a view looking south with Kites over on the right. This would be envisioned of 97% of the time when 12th Street is open to vehicular traffic. We're showing one way traffic south on 12th through this, this block. And then the ability to close off 12th at key locations, both at Moro, again, at Laramie, and then the alleyways to, to limit traffic during special events and the ability to really activate this street and have a, what we like to call a festival street. But activate it with pedestrian act, activity here. So again, the details aren't completely nailed down for each of the individual or the areas outside of each of the individual properties. So for example, the area that, that is Fat Shack that is shown right there could be tweaked according, accordingly after we have conversations individually with those property owners as to what their needs, they would like to see there. So this just generally shows the banding and the materials and carrying through the design aesthetic that we've already established throughout Aggieville thus far. Just another view, again, looking south, what that feels like. Here again, more ground level, seeing the types of furnishings and the vegetation on either side of the street and these little pocket nodes of seating that really help to allow respite and, and gathering spots in key locations as well as allow visibility and cool little overhead lighting elements. Another view of that, again, showing the, the site amenities, the banding, and again, the materials there. This is a view looking back towards the north. More of an aerial view showing again the plantings and the planters. So this, this is a view looking south, vehicles, road is open to vehicular traffic. And then, and this would be it closed, just allowing free access or free movement from a pedestrian level. And then this just shows carrying through that design language in a, a form, more minimalistic form, but into the alleyways and the ability to, to block those off at key times. So any questions regarding the renderings and the updates to, to the design at this point in time?
I presume, for example, this photo or this rendering is, still includes elements from the private development that was anticipated?
These have not been updated, yes, correct.
So how will, I, I mean, I guess we'll have to work with the developer as they move forward with their construction to kind of integrate that into whatever we choose to do on 12th Street, right?
Yeah, and something I would just point to, when you, when you think about Laramie between 14th and North Manhattan and the Chin property, you know, we, we were, we were complete before they really got to the point where they were done. They worked right up to it. There were some pieces and elements of that sidewalk that came in later that wasn't initially done because we knew they were under construction. It's kind of what we're talking with BHS about, like, maybe we don't finish these sidewalks all the way really to the property line. Maybe we, since the road does narrow, we could, and the sidewalks are very wide, we could leave those edges maybe 10 feet and, and allow for, still have good pedestrian movement, still allow the vehicle, but then allow that private development to have, have space to work and come up against. And then we come back and finish those sidewalks later. One thing I would just point out is the one lane, the two lanes on the north are, I will say required by fire department. They, they want to be able to serve the existing buildings, the, the Kites and the Fat Shack. And those buildings are not equipped with fire suppression like the new buildings will be south of the alley. So two lanes, they need that full space and width here to bring in a fire truck, put the outriggers out and, and satisfy any type of emergency on either side of the road. They recognize with new facilities, fire suppression, they wouldn't need that kind of room to serve these. They would also have Laramie to come into these buildings as well. And they were comfortable with narrowing that, which as Cody described, gives us a better opportunity to really fill that up with amenities for the pedestrian.
I really like this design, you know, when you look at places that people gather and when we want, what we want to build our community into, these are the types of, this is the type of thing that, that creates that, you know, allows people to, to loiter. But it, in a good way, you know, and in a, in a planned way. And, you know, I, I know that there've been projects like this in other cities that have been phenomenally successful. And I, I really love this idea. I think it's just, it's going to be a real, real nice benefit to the community.
Some of the conversations we've had with owners like Kites and like Annie Mays, you, you see the seating areas, there's some desire to have these up against the building and, and bring that sidewalk closer to the street. We can look at some of those concepts. We know with Taco Lucha and Solong and Tanner's, we looked at those. We want to be able to work with liquor laws and the ability to serve those areas and ADA access. Those are the two main things that tripped us up near Lucha and Solong to have those servers interact with those corrals and those seating areas. You see Lucha and Solong don't really use them for outdoor dining. They're really outdoor waiting and you can have a beverage when you're out there. These entities, Kites and even Fat Shack have talked about, no, we want tables, chairs. We want people to be able to sit, order, eat and, and not only drinks, but, but food as well. So we're going to have to look at some options. I just, my caveat to them is ADA access and the alcohol laws. We want to make sure whatever we put in, we accomplish both of those things.
I mean, I do hope this design, I, I do want us to move closer to common consumption, which is a different, different discussion for a different day. But I, I like, I like where this is going. And I think that helps make that conversation a little easier when we're ready to, to have that. I mean, my, my questions are going to come more down to financing, or not financing, but funds. So we're projecting like $26 million for, not for this, for the rest of the Aggieville improvements, right, Jason? And so if we look at these three items, that still leaves us about 17 million. I, I just want to know the bigger picture of what I, it's hard for me to approve portions of things when I don't, I don't know what we're planning to do with the rest of it. If we're approving this, what could we potentially not do because we won't have the funds for something else later in Aggieville? So I, I just needed a little bit more future plan with the rest of the funds.
Sure, and, and we're seeing obviously cost escalate significantly. Per block costs are just much different today than they were prior to, to COVID. We, it's, it's a big reason why I want to get to Moro next. I believe Moro is where the community is going to want to invest. I, I think it's where the district is going to want the city to invest. If we can get there first, we'll, we have, you know, the pot of money, not pot, but the, the adequate resources are there to, to, to move forward. If we've got to scale things back, I'd rather scale them back on Laramie personally than Moro. And it, it's a big rea-, you.
Yeah.
It, it, we don't have just an endless supply of money, right? I mean, there's a sales tax out there that was passed in 2020, took effect in 2023. We, we anticipate roughly $60 million coming in over that 10 year period. Half towards North Campus, half towards Aggieville. Both districts also have, and both areas also have other revenue streams. Aggieville has a TIF. We are seeing projections and experience over what we anticipated. So we're in a good position from an Aggieville TIF perspective to generate more than $20 million. And with another 30 from the sales tax, we're in that $50 million range. We've spent 33 to date, so yeah, that, yeah, 17 is, is a rough number. We'll have to watch it, you know, it, it, sales tax can do all kinds of things. But right now, adequate revenues to move forward with these projects, adequate revenues to get into Moro, we're going to be.
Get in tomorrow.
Get in tomorrow and start talking about it.
More.
I think we'll be able to complete Moro. Laramie is the project that I feel like we may need to leverage a little bit. And well, again, we can watch revenues. It, it's difficult to sit here and say what revenues will be by 2033.
I know, I, I think that's the part is doing the smaller stretch. Like you said, I, I wouldn't, if we're going to scale back, I think I'd rather scale back on this section, right? If that was, if that was the difference between in the overall vision, if something has to give. And, and there's a couple of other items that we need to, to talk about that all go into that same one. But I think it's the like, what are we willing to give for me that's the smaller segment? That we're, maybe I'm looking, but that's the smaller, yeah.
Yeah, and I would just add, the $50 million is really based on projections of pretty modest growth in the district and the sales tax basically being flat for the next 10 years. The X factor that we've always talked about is the private improvements that take place in Aggieville. And that's why it's, it's part of the discussion tonight. It's not to say those private developments won't happen, we just don't see them on the immediate horizon. But each of those projects stand to generate substantial revenues within the district. The district lasts till 2038. The sooner any private development can occur, the better. The Chin property coming on, the Marriott, both of those really generated substantial increment beyond our projections by 2024. The two properties we're talking about tonight have great, just great potential. But we got to watch, we got to, we got to keep observing that and we got to keep observing what these estimates could be. Doing 12th Street between Moro and Laramie, I think is essential for us to move to Moro next. I really do. If we don't do this now and we sit and wait and we start designing Moro and we get private development pressuring us to get public infrastructure done, 12th, Laramie, 12th down to Fremont, these calendars associated with these projects, they're long. And, and we could get in a position where we're, we're behind from a public infrastructure standpoint, so.
I mean, I guess, are we going to hear from TJ before we dive into more discussion on those? Or before we make a decision on.
Yeah.
Approving the, that would be my personal thing is to kind of put everything out on the table, get us all on the same page on, on these four items before we take action on item one of the, even the, the Evergy one, I would just like to.
Absolutely.
Could, could I just add, at Law Board Monday, we talked about having plainclothes people in Aggieville policemen. And so I would hope that whatever you guys do, you do run it by the cops first and just to see if there's any safety issues. Because we really need to make this a safe place for people to go or nobody's going to go there.
Absolutely.
No matter how many nice bricks you have.
Yep, absolutely. We've, we've kept them engaged throughout our entire process. I think the CCA will engage RCPD as well. So we'll talk about these, these things simultaneously.
Jason, let's move on to the trash program.
Trash, all right.
Thank you, Cody.
Trash is, trash is a two-year process. Trash requires us to engage with the district. As a municipality, we do have the authority to conduct a municipal trash service. In Manhattan, we don't have one. We have roughly six to seven private haulers. Everybody in your home and your business contract, contracts out for that trash. You have discretion over when it happens. We hired a consultant from Orlando to come in and talk to us about Aggieville. They did some research, really took all the information in. We have 90 plus trash cans in Aggieville. We have all haulers represented. Multiple businesses don't have space for any trash cans and work with their neighbors to supply trash receptacles. The city did have a dumpster and a compactor on the parking lot that is now Midtown, south of Kites there at one point in time. That has been removed. But this requires us to go through a pretty extensive process whereby resolutions are adopted, ordinances are considered, plans are developed, and there's adequate time for the district to adjust to a municipal service. The Orlando consultant recognized there's a couple of options you can take by way of implementing such a program, some of which they recognize would be challenging with 100 different businesses and so many different property owners in this district to organize them and get them to actually pay for it. There are municipal approaches where the city can administer, run, coordinate and facilitate the trash and look to partnerships for future funding and payment for that service. We obviously have BIDs in both Aggieville and downtown. We have agreements with both downtown and Aggieville organizations that are ever increasing for services. The 2016 Aggieville vision noticed and, and acknowledged trash service is unsightly. And trash is something they desired to be addressed by, in a minute, the city throughout the process. This is the opportunity, this is the time where we have redevelopment efforts underway. Three of the compactors are proposed within private property that we have been in touch with the owners and there's a willingness to work with us at this point. The other two compactors, one is in the city lot next to Hunnam. And the other is the city-owned trash screen next to Good Sense out on Little Moro. We just constructed this, there are three rollaway dumpsters in there. It has been designed in size to handle a compactor. So from a acquisition and construction standpoint, we're in a good position. If the redevelopment happens and we don't move on this opportunity, we feel like it is going to be very difficult for us to move forward without getting into really probably hard negotiations over property to put compactors in and consolidate trash in the future. So we've talked about this for multiple years. It's reached a point now with all the private development and all the public infrastructure we're investing in as an opportunity. Tonight, there's a lot of cost estimates, there's a lot of timelines. Here are the locations that BHS helped us identify. Let me try to blow this up a little bit. This is the location by the Hunnam site. This is the location by Handy Corner and by Midtown. And then this would be a location roughly around Starbucks, the renovated Coco Bolos in the alley there next to the. next to the, the varsity truck, and then our Little Moro site, um, by Triangle Park. So those would be the five locations, all within roughly a half-block walk of most businesses in Aggieville. And again, taking 90 receptacles down to five and looking at service for the district, um, potentially multiple times a week. Uh, but compactors are gonna create a tremendous efficiency within the district. They'll be sealed up. It won't leak. Uh, we, the city, uh, would, um, one scenario is for us to own them, maintain them, and contract the service on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. There are other scenarios, if that is not palatable. I do think we face some real challenges in the district. If we're gonna approach this with, uh, yeah, all 100 businesses need to participate. I think we're gonna have a roomful of people not real happy with that scenario. So to me, it's one of those amenities and one of those services we either see as a high priority and we're ready to go invest and manage this. If it's one that we feel like, yeah, we'll do it, but all the businesses in the district need to pay for that service. My inclination to you all is that'll be very difficult and I'm not sure it'll be worth the time and effort. We can have those conversations, though. We can bring those folks in the room. I'm just basing that off feedback and our consultants work in the district and them gaining feedback themselves. We don't have municipal trash services anywhere else in town. Um, these are the alleys. They can hire their own today. We're bringing in a, a benefit, in my opinion. But I think a lot of people view it as a community benefit and not necessarily a benefit back to the business.
So they wouldn't be paying for their own trash service, or would we increase the, their BID fees, whatever, whichever fee it is?
There, there are options for the governing body. I think knowing upfront what the plan or what the will is of the governing body will help. We obviously have an annual contract with the ABA. We don't know exactly what this will cost on a monthly, annual basis. So there's, this isn't easy. I'm not suggesting it is. It's just if we want to clean up the alleys and reduce 90 down to five, this is the opportunity to consider it.
And there are potential options that a trash service may, we may be able to rent trash, like, we wouldn't have to own the compactors and those things if there's a-
Just the site itself, we would need to control. Wouldn't have to own it, but we would need to control the site.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jason, does this include cooking oil?
Grease is another approach that we would like to, uh, look at. There are companies that will come in and install PVC pipe that create, um, ports on the edge of your building. The truck pulls up, connects into that quickly, basically sucks out the grease from the business and moves on. Now, they'll put the infrastructure in place. They're just looking for your grease for a year at a time. But yes, we, we would like to explore that, too. It, it's probably even more unsightly than the trash.
Yeah, no, I really, you know, really urge us to make that part of the whole thing.
Yeah.
Um, we've been looking at the municipal trash since 1989. Um, the County Solid Waste Committee recommended that we have, uh, municipal trash because what we're doing now is so inefficient, having seven trash haulers go up and down alleys. But of course, it always runs up against private enterprises, as it should. So just good luck.
Yes, it's, again, I, I just don't, given what we heard from the community, given what we heard through 2016 Aggieville Vision, if, if we don't tackle this right now, I just feel like this is a topic that's just gonna slide.
Currently are any, I'm trying to think of where all the, the current 90 trash cans are. Like when we're doing, you know, this redevelopment down there, if we don't go forward with this, are we gonna have these like beautiful pedestrian streets and then these-
Full of trash cans.
Yeah, that's what like-
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yeah, that's-
Wanted to make sure that that was-
So really, this is, this is a, a way to protect our investment in the community. Um, and keep, you know, we're, we're, we're spending this money to make these alleyways nice and lit and safe. And then doing this consolidated trash would keep them smelling fine.
And they do, they do smell in the summer.
They, they stink real bad. Uh, and they leak and there's flies everywhere. It is, it's, it's not good.
We, we were talking about the other day about the, the pedestrian movement to Co- to and from Coco Bolos. And parking here and walking through this alley, it-
Gross.
Every, everybody had that experience, right? So yeah, that's what we're talking about addressing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and again, you know, like we're talking about with 12th Street, this is just something that enhances people's experience in the district and, and, and vitalizes this district. And I, I've talked to, you know, we've had business owners from the district here. And I've talked to some, uh, independently as well, and they're, they're all on it, too. Because, you know, there's, there are, there are some businesses that don't have, they don't have trash cans. And so they, they have to either make a deal with their neighbors or not. But everybody has a lot of trash. So, um, you know, I think, you know, if we had, knowing that we had Kites and some of the busiest restaurants who are going to be generating the most amount of trash here supporting this, um, signals to me that, you know, the, at least the idea of it is gonna be popular and, and will go, go over fairly well with the district.
Yeah, from a cost perspective, Little Moro is basically ready for a compactor, so you can kind of get an idea of what a compactor costs. The other sites need attention like Little Moro received in terms of creating the space to locate the compactor, but keep it screened.
And then that's, so that's just our initial investment, plus then we'd have to have the maintenance for the, for the hall. Okay.
Annual maintenance and the, the obviously monthly service. Yep.
Jason, can any of this be phased in during that two-year period that's required by statute? For example, could Little Moro proceed, uh, in 2025 or 2026?
Legal may need to help me here, but I think there's a process we have to follow that identifies like an area where we're going to do this. I don't think it automatically means you have to do it immediately, but maybe that phasing's part of the discussion that you have with the public on what you plan to do.
Yeah, actually that, I, I, I'm thinking now that that may also have repercussions for bidding for a contractor to do this, so.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's pros and cons either way. I do think the Hunam lot has another potential for redevelopment. We've heard from an adjacent owner that would like to do something.
You mean rather than the con- the compactor?
No, just, just taking our parking lot, their parking lot, property adjacent to it. And they have concepts and plans, you know, to, to potentially approach the city with. Again, doesn't mean we have to do those things. It's just when those things come forward and those developers are ready, us saying, whoa, 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 we got two-year process to get to trash before we do all that, it's, it's just problematic to get it done. Doesn't mean you can't identify another location, but now you're dealing with property owners that may not be our easiest to work with.
On the actual collection, this, when we get to that point, we would do a separate RFP for who would do it. So it wouldn't be included, I mean, we only had one person do the city RFP, so we could-
Yeah.
Or we could carve off trash service.
And with compactors, you're probably gonna narrow that field pretty-
Okay.
Pretty tightly. Yeah. And, and we could always buy a truck and do it ourselves.
Yeah, sure. We talked about that grant today.
Yeah. So, any other questions about trash and that topic? John, did you have anything, Commissioner Ramada?
No, I actually, you know, looked this all over and I'm good with those top three, one, two, and three.
Thank you. Any other questions on overhead berry and the alleys or 12th Street itself? Want to hear from TJ? Alright.
Good evening. I am TJ Vilkanskas with Back Nine Development and representing Midtown Land Company tonight. Uh, first off, I'd just like to apologize. There's nobody that wanted these buildings and these projects to move forward more than I did. You know, as we look at the environment right now, um, we based our plans off of a 2016 Aggieville Vision Plan and, uh, tried to adhere to a 2021 RFP. You know, we, we look around Manhattan right now and you got some great buildings. You got, you know, Civics Plus with 20,000-plus square feet open. You got the New Foundation Building with close to 60,000 square feet open. You got the Farm Bureau Building with Class A office space that they've redone. You even got the Varneys Building with about 12,000 square feet of Class A office space. As much as I want to push my building forward, do we really need 100,000 more square feet of office space in our community? Or should we be focused on filling what we have right now and helping the people that own those buildings get those full? And then look at doing more office space? And, you know, I didn't have an anchor tenant and I just thought it was irresponsible of me to continue to push this office space forward. I wanted to speak tonight because I wanted to support the continual infrastructure in Aggieville. Obviously, for the past three years, I've gotten to know most of the local business owners there. And I know the pain points they've had, um, with construction in the area. Um, and just getting that to a point, um, that everybody's proud of, um, and excited about. You know, I, I will speak to this site here, um, which was supposed to be the mixed-use building with about 100,000 square feet of, of office space. I will tell you, I hope to be back in front of you in the very near future, within, you know, the next two to three months. I don't have anything, um, that I can show you tonight, but it would be our intention to try to still meet our deadlines and follow along with BHS, so the improvements of this site could still tie in with the infrastructure improvements that we have just discussed on 12th Street in the alley. I think that is the, in the best interest of the city. But obviously, if the scope of what that project is changes, um, nothing can go forward without the permission of the commission. So we will be back there, but everybody needs to know that it is our intention to push that site forward. All of our resources are going to that site right now to conceptually come up with something that can meet all those timelines and all of those deadlines, um, and, and create, um, a path where we don't have to worry as much about tearing up the new street or something like that as we try to move that forward. Additionally, I'm, I'm a big supporter of consolidated trash, as we just talked about. Every building and every concept that we are continuing to work on, we are designing it so that you have the consolidated trash in the footprint like Jason was alluding to on both sites. Uh, I do think that, that that is an important aspect, um, on, on both pieces of property. Obviously, the quicker we can get these things going, um, the more money we can generate for the TIF. As you all know, the TIF expires in 2038. If the TIF basically says every additional dollar of property tax revenue is gonna go back into Aggieville and is gonna have to help pay for some of this infrastructure. And so that's obviously a good thing. It's something we want to see, uh, moving forward as fast as we can. I will also say that even the parking lot that is tore up right now, um, once the replat hit, we are generating almost $70,000 more per year than we were previously. And we do still have, um, plenty of parking with the new garage there. Obviously, as I said, we want to move this forward as fast as we can. Um, and, and finally, I'll say that i- in, in talking to a lot of members, uh, of, of the city of Manhattan and, and hearing things, one thing that I'd like to acknowledge that we've done a poor job of is keeping that site clean. And so, um, I believe tomorrow you will see people out there starting to work on some more weed control and getting rid of some of the standing water. Um, and we will do a better job on this particular site until we get it back under construction again. Of just making it more presentable and keeping mosquitoes away and all of those things that I've heard from people. We wanted to acknowledge that we will address that. On the Handy Corner site, uh, over here, I, I have two tenants in there that have legal leases. Uh, we have tried to work with them, um, and they have tried to work with us. Uh, we just have not gotten to the point where they have found another location, um, that we could agree to financially. And so at this point in time, they are still, um, in that Handy Corner building. And that building will stay there, um, until their lease runs out or until we can amicably work out a solution for them. So that piece on Handy Corner for right now is, is not gonna move forward there until we can figure that out, um, and, uh, go from there. But mainly, I wanted to be up here to support the Aggieville infrastructure, um, apologize for the delay. Uh, we have a significant amount of money invested in this already. Um, we want to see projects go forward here. But as hard as it is to say, if I go and put $60 million into a building that sits there and we can't fill and we can't pay taxes on, the city and myself are probably in a worse situation than we would be if we paused for a little bit and we tried to find a better solution for everybody going forward. Acknowledging the fact that anything going forward will be back in front of this group, um, for discussion again. But happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Yeah, TJ, I do agree. More office space. A, a, a building that's empty wouldn't have, have helped us the way we wanted it to. I, I do want to say like, we can't just do better with cleaning it up. Like, it's gotta get clean, that space. It, it's, it's rough looking, so I do hope that that gets moving, um, really soon. I, I'm excited to see what the plan is because with the TIF, we know how, how important it is to get something in there. So I think every day we're not hearing what that proposal is for the Midtown site. We're, we're losing time and we're losing dollars. So I just encourage that to happen, um, as soon as possible, getting back with us.
I have no, um, knowledge of, of retail space, but I was, um, asked by, um, our mayor to meet with the Farm Bureau executives that came in from Des Moines, and they said the Farm Bureau, Bureau Building was rented up.
Yeah, they're, they've currently gutted a lot of it and have completely renovated. It's beautiful. I am not aware of it. It's completely rented. Last I checked, on LoopNet or something like that, they had, I don't know, 10,000 to 15,000 square feet still available, but that is a very small percentage in that amount. Between, you know, the, the bulk of it is probably the New Foundation Building and Civics Plus there. But, um, yeah, I, I think, I heard today actually in a chamber board meeting that they have made some positive steps over in the Farm Bureau Building, and I'm happy to hear that.
So I, I appreciate you coming here and, and being open and honest about what's, what's going on. Uh, I know sometimes it's, it, it's not easy, I, I, I'm sure, um, for something like this. You've, this is, this is the second time that you've been here, having to, to admit that this isn't going the way that you planned. And so, uh, I know that's not easy. You know, I think when we talk about what can go in that site, I, I really hope that, that we can kind of work together, um, to put in what's gonna be best for the community, um, even if that might sacrifice a little bit of time. You know, and, and it may end up being, you know, a hotel or something like that. I, I, I don't know right now. But I really want us to look at that, um, and, and try to work together to, to, to really get something that fits the district and, and complements the district, um, and benefits as many folks as we can, you know? I, I, I was kind of excited to have, you know, some, some spaces that some small businesses could go into, some retail space and stuff like that. Uh, I, I know, you know, we've had some conversations about that's kind of difficult, uh, to, to work out financially. But, you know, I, I think we can try to turn this into an opportunity, um, I hope. Uh, and, and try to get, make something that's mutually, mutually beneficial. That's, you know, we gotta go, we gotta work with what we've got now. And I, I really would like us to, to try and work together to, to build something that's gonna be, um, just really, really improve the district. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ.
Well, we can start from the top. There is an agreement in your packet for overhead berry from Evergy in the alley. We have 12th Street estimates and looking for guidance and direction there. Trash locations, timelines, budgets, looking for guidance and direction there. The action item tonight is the Evergy contract. The other two, we're looking for your advice, your concurrence from the majority to move in a certain direction on those topics. Happy to answer any questions pertaining to those three items.
Jason, I think that I can speak for all of us that we appreciate the efforts to keep things moving in Aggieville. We certainly acknowledge how disruptive the last several years have been and how it looks as if the upcoming, next several years will continue to be. But hopefully, there's agreement that we aren't moving to a more attractive part of our community. I think the north part of Laramie Street has already borne that out. I appreciate that you've worked with the consultants to consider incremental development in terms of not quite finishing out all of the sidewalks in order to minimize possible damage from subsequent construction. And I think that, taken together as a package, these several initiatives that you've put forward tonight make sense. They, as Peter mentioned, they would contribute to the safety and more, I'm sorry, maybe Karen made that comment.
That's okay.
You know, the safety and cleanliness of that part of town. And so, I think I would personally feel okay with approving the relocation agreement with Evergy. Move forward on that. I appreciate the direction that the renderings for 12th Street are taking and look forward to seeing more specific drafts as that comes down the line. I like the idea of a consolidated trash program. I think there's quite a few details that need to be worked out with that. But given that there's a two-year timeframe that by statute we must follow, I think it's imperative that we do get started on that now rather than, sooner rather than later. It sounds as if, I don't know if a majority of the Aggieville businesses support it, but it sounds as if several of the larger key players do. Let's keep having dialogue with the Aggieville, the ABD and see what we can do to develop consensus around that and urge TJ to continue to do what he can to bring some ideas forward to us for that ongoing development. I think it would be remiss of us to not acknowledge the challenges of the business development environment right now. And we understand these are high-dollar projects. There's a lot of moving parts to that. And we will, we don't have a whole lot of control over those elements, but we would just, I'm sure, as he said, he's got a lot invested in this and he would like to see that move forward. So that's all to say, if the Commission agrees.
Yeah, and I think you could push the trash thing, not just as a beautification thing, but public health too. I mean, quite frankly, we know that those open trash things are probably receptacles of vermin and things like that that we don't really want to think about in our alleys. But it really is a public health issue.
Any other comments? John, anything to add?
No, just as I said before that I'm in support of one, all three. So I'd like to see us approve that first one and then just keep going on the other two.
All right. So Commissioners, do we have a motion to approve a relocation agreement with Evergy to bury overhead lines in the 1,100-block alley between Morrow and Laramie Street in Aggieville?
Yeah, I'll move to approve a relocation agreement with Evergy to bury overhead lines in the 1,100-block alley between Morrow Street and Laramie Street in Aggieville.
Second.
We have had a motion from Commissioner Opelt and a second from Commissioner McCullough to approve the relocation agreement with Evergy. City Clerk, can you take the role, please?
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Anafcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Jason, do you need any further initiative, any further guidance from us?
No, I believe we'll continue to move forward with 12th Street. We'll get to a point where BHS will put together a guaranteed maximum price. We'll bring that back to you all with designs that reflect that maximum price for action. Looks like probably early 2025. And we'll more than likely start the process for trash early 2025 as well.
Thank you. It is, right now, it's 8:36. We have one other item on the agenda, which will probably generate a bit of discussion. I'd like to suggest that we take a 10-minute interval and reconvene at 8:46.
Oh, you're good.
I didn't need to do that. Just, I think I'm dehydrated from being sick. Peter and Karen, just. Friends, we will be reconvening our meeting, please. It's now 8:46. Let us reconvene. Looks like our very interested public has, for the most part, had their interests satisfied for the evening. We move on to our final item on the agenda, to consider exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. And this action will require us to approve or not a resolution regarding the City Commission's intent to levy property tax exceeding the revenue-neutral rate and setting a public hearing. So, Jason, can we have your presentation?
Sorry. There's a resolution in your packet and it is currently blank when it comes to the mill levy. So tonight, per state law, we have to pass a resolution that identifies that mill rate. And we have to also identify whether or not we're exceeding the revenue-neutral rate. We had a good dialogue on the radio show this morning about this topic. It's not simple. It's not easy. It is difficult to grasp. There are a lot of moving parts. It is not just, hey, what's your mill rate? Just keep that the same and you're okay. We fortunately live in a county and in a city that has growth. So valuation grows. It moves. And your mill levy and your valuation growth really factor in to what you pay in taxes. As you look at your home or you look at any property that you own and each year it moves in valuation, your mill levy can stay the same, but you can still pay more in taxes because your valuation is growing. So we have to look at it from an entire-city perspective. And Riley County is predominantly, in the city of Manhattan, is predominantly in Riley County. We do have a significant commercial presence in Pot County. So we have to get valuation notices from both Riley County and Pot County for property in the city limits. And right now, our growth is just over 4% collectively within the city limits of Manhattan. If we were going to be revenue-neutral next year, based on that 4% growth, the current mill levy of 48.9 would have to go down to 47.007. So it would have to actually decline by roughly 1.9 mills in order to generate the same amount of property taxes for '25 that we did in '24. Before we get into any more conversation, I just want to look back to the Commission. Are we tracking? Are we following this math equation, this revenue-neutral rate designation? Whereas if you have growth, you actually have to lower your mill levy in order to generate the same amount of taxes. Everybody good? All right. So tonight's action really isn't all that binding. It sets a ceiling. It sets a ceiling if you're going to exceed that revenue neutral rate. So forty-seven point zero zero seven, if the commission told us that is the mill rate, that is what we're going for, we would have to turn around, modify this resolution briefly, insert forty-seven point zero zero seven. But I believe our calendar to approve a budget would narrow by thirty days. We would have to complete a budget by the middle of August. If we exceed the revenue neutral rate, we can move that adoption to September, which is where we anticipated it would be. Based on our past conversations on where we're at from a budget standpoint, we didn't hear a whole lot of, we just, we don't want to capture any growth. We want to keep our mill levy the same. So we assumed you'd want to exceed the revenue neutral rate. So that's what the resolution is drafted as. I have other information about mill levies and about our situation and scenario financially. But at this point in time, is there concurrence to exceed the revenue neutral rate?
I think we need to, just because we don't need to bind ourselves at this point. We're not even halfway through the budget. I think we should aim for revenue neutrality, but neutrality, right? But I just hate for us to say at this point, we're going to do this. And this just gives us also more time to do the budget. We can always go down.
Correct.
I think that there's a little bit of language in here that might be a little misleading in the last paragraph on that page, Jason, where it says, the second sentence, "By adopting the resolution, the City Commission is expressing its intent, the final twenty-twenty-five budget will exceed revenue neutral." I'd rather have that read that the budget may exceed the revenue neutral rate.
So the state law, and we may have to get into other departments here, the intent here is to inform the public of what it is you plan to do. Exceeding it gives them notice that the revenue neutral rate is going to be exceeded. Saying you're at it or below it also is an indicator back to the public for that hearing's purposes. And that resolution is really about informing the public of what that hearing is going to be about. It doesn't mean you're set at a mill rate, but it assumes you're going to exceed it. Now, will, shall, those are, I understand where you're coming from. It wouldn't prohibit you. It wouldn't. But you are indicating to the public via this resolution that a hearing is going to take place. And that's where our conversation is going to lead to, what is the mill rate you want to put in this thing? That you're going to notice the public about.
And I understand it. Katie, I don't know if this language is dictated by statute, but to me, this is indicating that starting tomorrow, we're going to be getting an awful lot of emails about raising taxes, when in fact, we are giving ourselves the opportunity to stay within the mill levy that we have been under for the previous year, or possibly increase it to deal with the increases implied in the police department budget and the library budget. But I would like to try to make it as clear as possible to the public that we're not there yet. And so that's all.
Yeah.
Jason, if you want to pull up that resolution text, it doesn't contain that exact same language.
Okay.
With will exceed, it does say something in section one. It just says expresses intention to exceed the revenue neutral rate. It doesn't use will or may in the actual resolution itself. That language, I think that you were looking at was in the executive summary of the memo. So the resolution itself is the action you're going to take. So section one. And this is the language that's reflective of the statute. You can see it doesn't say. It's just expressing an intent to exceed. I understand it might be read similarly to your concern, but the resolution will reflect your action tonight, not the paragraph in the memo.
And is it obligatory that this language be used?
Yes. I mean, we do use the form from the League of Kansas Municipalities. We review it against the statute. I mean, if you wanted to make a suggestion, I'd be happy to look into that and make sure that we felt that it would comply with the statute. But that would require us then to come back and have the commission take action in a future meeting. And I'm not sure we have time to do that.
Time.
So we are using the state, the league's form of the statute.
I mean, do we have any intent other than exceeding the revenue from last year?
We don't know, do we? I mean.
I think we're definitely going to do it.
I think we almost have to. I mean, we've already got the RCPD budget that is five percent higher than last year. And if we already dipped into our cash reserves with the revenue that we brought in last year. I hear what you're saying, Susan, but if it's something that we're going to have to deal with, we should be upfront about what we're going to have to do with our revenue next year.
So why don't, if you're ready, we can jump into these scenarios. And we can really talk about mills and rates and where we've been and where we potentially might be headed.
Jason, before you dive into those, can you walk me through the timeline of when budget items were going to be presented? Like, when are we going to be able to workshop these again?
Yeah, pretty much every work session from now until.
We're canceling next week, so.
The thirtieth, we'll hear from the chamber. We'll hear from the Corps of Engineers on the levy. But we'll also, when we hear from the chamber, we'll be providing you more information on the budget. August sixth, legislative night, if we have more information ready for you all, we'll provide it. The thirteenth, for sure, we'd like to know kind of where you're landing on the mill levy so we can prepare the general fund and have all budget detail and budget sheets ready for you on August thirteenth. Then on August twenty-seventh, utilities will be here to talk about water, storm, sewer.
We haven't seen the capital improvements budget, have we?
Capital improvements will be on the thirteenth as well.
That's a pretty big deal.
Yeah, I, yeah. Those conversations, we need to highlight what we have in place. We haven't put a lot of effort into adding to it, given where we're at financially. But we'll give you the detail that was prepared for last year for this year's budget. Some departments have modified those in water and sewer and storm, where they have funding sources. But from a general fund, CIP, we have zeroed that out this year, and it's going to be difficult for us to have revenue next year.
I think you may have zeroed it out, but I do think we need to see the CIP.
Yeah, absolutely.
And see what's been, because there are things that will cost us more money not to do them.
Absolutely. We're fixing roofs that were in prior CIPs because there's water leaking everywhere. So you're absolutely correct. Good timeline, yeah. And really, any meeting along the way until we hit the third Tuesday in September, more information, dialogue and discussion about the budgets. So we put these scenarios together, and the valuation analysis that were part of your packet, there's six of them. Each of them have a little bit of a twist and a turn. And really, some of it's just to get these ideas and scenarios out there so you can let them sink in and talk about them tonight. And we'll talk about them really probably through September, just where you want the mill levy to land. Twenty-twenty-two, we had a mill levy of fifty-two point one four three. And here are the totals per category: PD, library, general fund, employee benefit fund, fire equipment reserve, Kansas Police and Fire, and then bond and interest. Those are our main mill levy-supported funds within the city. We jumped to twenty-twenty-three. We recognize we're fairly flat. We grew by point zero one one mills, but we had a five-point-nine growth percentage in Manhattan from twenty-two to twenty-three. Twenty-twenty-four, we dropped three-point-two-two-five mills. On the same, we had a nine-and-a-half percent growth overall in the community from a valuation perspective. We are projected to be four percent. And with PD's budget and with the library's budget, we held every one of these flat for city-related functions and came with a fifty-point-one-six-five mill levy, which is a one-point-two-three-six mill over the forty-eight point nine-two-nine in twenty-twenty-four. That's, again, not making any changes for the city, operations that are under your management's control. But we did alter PD and the library based on what the law board passed and what the library presented to you all a few weeks ago. So scenarios two through six, and I put the attachments at the bottom. And I apologize if the attachments didn't get in the order I wanted them in, but that's the order they went in. And it's goofy. It's goofy. You can see the order I would rather have put them in is reflected on the top, but my attachment order is really odd. So my apologies.
I think, though, the attachments, those aren't the right numbers, right? It was one through six.
The.
Right?
I'll show you.
Or the valuation.
Resolution is attachment line, the valuations are two through seven.
Yeah.
But I feel like the valuations were numbered one through.
It's just the memo. The memo listed the attachments, one through seven.
I know. It was just.
That's what I referenced it at. But you're right. It's one through five.
No, it was one through six.
It's one through six, but there was, anyway.
So two was valuation one, three valuation. Great. Thank you for making that super clear.
You want me, I can add another line.
I super appreciate that. If you could, that'd be great.
Valuation analysis number, yeah. So, anyway, I'll walk through where we were trying, what we were trying to accomplish. The first four scenarios after one, two through five, talk about a shift in mills away from the bond and interest into the general fund. I'm not sitting here tonight all that comfortable with what we're going to talk about. It's not something long-term that I think is really sustainable. But you have seen since twenty-twenty-two, we have started to lower our mill levy in the bond and interest. It's a healthy balance right now. We have a tremendous amount of revenue coming into it. There's a twenty million dollar cash balance in the bond and interest. We have a hundred million in temp notes. We have three hundred million in debt. That twenty million is, it's pledged. It's got a home. It's just not right now. The three-point-six-six mills are roughly two-point-eight million dollars. There's a scenario where we move the three-point-six-six to leaving a point zero zero one. It really can zero out, but for this purpose, we left a trace of a mill left in the bond and interest and moved it to the general fund. So the general fund mill levy went from six-point-oh-eight to nine-point-seven-four-two. It generates two-point-eight million dollars in the general fund, over and above what was generated in twenty-twenty-four. The next scenario actually increases the mill levy. This scenario does not increase the mill levy. It leaves it right at fifty-point-one-six-five, which is what I told you it was, just with PD and the library. It basically zeros out the bond and interest, and it moves it up here to the nine-point-seven-four-two. No mill, no mill increase, two-point-eight million realizing the general fund. Now we start adding mills. One more mill over the nine-point-seven, we go to ten-seven. Now we're at a two-point-two mill increase. We're at fifty-one. Here's a third mill. Now we're two mills above where we were, sorry. Not a third one yet. That's out here. So we have a three-point-two mill increase. We go to fifty-two overall. One-point-two, that's PD and the library, two mills to the general fund on top of the three-point-six-six. Now you've got your four-point-two million. This is put together to try to give you all a little perspective in addition to what we gave you a couple of weeks ago. A four million dollar gap in terms of expenditures and revenues in our general fund. This is a way to do it, give the new city manager an opportunity to look at the finances, look at the way we're operating, and have a recommendation for you all the following year, and undoing this would be very easy. Undoing a furlough or personnel reduction is going to be a challenge. That's the extreme over there on the personnel side. This is the extreme on the levy side. But every year, you have these levers with the levy. I point out fifty-two mills in twenty-two and in twenty-three from the city of Manhattan, dropping to forty-eight point nine in twenty-twenty-four. Is there a tolerance to come back to fifty-two? I show a fifty-three just because I'd like to pay our people, and I'd like to have a CIP, and I'd like to buy some vehicles and replace some equipment. But I'm, that's just me. So four-point-nine million, three-mill increase, four-point-two overall, gets you to a fifty-three mill levy. See a lot of facial expressions up there right now.
Jason.
So let's have some conversation.
For tonight, I'm going to use two and five, which is.
Which two?
Which is.
Scenario two and scenario five?
What, two was one, and five was four. The far right, J and K columns.
Yes. Scenario five and six.
Does it matter for tonight?
No, not if we.
Not at all.
Which one of those?
Not at all.
Okay, so that doesn't matter. We're not.
The mill levy conversation.
I just wanted to clarify that. It was just the mill levy part.
Absolutely. I mean, we could go right back to the resolution. You guys can identify a mill levy you're willing to set as a ceiling, and we can stop talking. But I'm trying to get at.
I do like that option.
Yeah, I know. We can. That's up to you all. I'm trying to get into a conversation that'll help us internally create a budget for you all in August that you can react to. If a mill levy strategy like this is part of something you want to see, part of a strategy to address the four million, we can bring it into the equation, and we can throw bigger package type of scenarios together where we look at other revenue streams. Here's the point I really wanted to make tonight. When I left you a couple of weeks ago, we talked about getting into sales tax, and we talked about carving money off the seventy percent, the twenty percent, and the ten percent and paying for our people. The seventy percent sales tax is all going to the bond and interest fund. So taking mills from the bond and interest fund is the equivalent of taking cash from the seventy percent. And the seventy percent is a sales tax question that went to the public with an expectation that it do something. And I just told you tonight, that sixty million that's generated out of that seventy percent, thirty of it's going to North Campus, thirty of it's going to Aggieville. Well, it can't all go there if we peel it off and give it to staff, or we pay out of the general fund. But you can move these mills around and give you some short-term flexibility to think about how you want to replenish bond and interest revenues.
So what you're saying, okay, so if we go with moving those three-point-six mills into the general fund, bond and interest doesn't go unfunded next year.
No.
There's still, there's still money going into it. We're still going to be able to make our obligations.
Correct. And we will bring a bond and interest forecast to you all. We will show you the scenario of moving this two-point-eight million out for a year, for two years, for three years. And it doesn't take long before it starts to really hurt, because all that debt is there. All that, all those projects are going to start coming, and those annual payments are going to start to need to be made. And it's not a great long-term strategy. But it is a strategy for twenty-twenty. Yes, John?
I got a question for you. Why do your numbers here not match what's on the, your assessed evaluation growth charts?
In the packet?
Yeah. Because like your police budget, I think it's the entire police budget, not just our portion.
Which valuation outlook? I think they're all the same.
The outlook one, one of the ones, I think, were six-point-seven percent was the one I was looking at. The, oh, the outlook one, one of the ones I think were six point seven percent was the one I was looking at. I mean, yeah, your RCP budget's twenty-one nine one seven and.
That's five.
Because the other thing is, when you look at the differences between the two, that one's like it, the police department budget's going up like eight point three on that valuation growth.
Oh, no.
But on your other one, it's going up four point one.
This is why I did not want to get into opening all these tonight, that's why I created my. I think the. So that's the big, that's, that's not the one I want. You're talking about.
Well, really, you could look at any of them.
Well, the, the four, the four gets to the six point seven percent that I think you're talking about. I think number four here, yeah. So this is just an increase in the one point one seven two mills for RCPD. And there, there virtually no changes to anything else other than a little bit of a negative. But that, even that doesn't.
Oh, oh.
So if you just isolate RCPD, this scenario shows you the six point seven percent increase.
Okay, so you're doing, okay, so you're doing that one with the, with the mills.
Yep.
But see, but see, you know what the, I mean, I like looking at this one because you're telling me on that one that you're looking at a six point seven percent tax increase.
Yeah, when we just isolate PD and the library has a changing mill levy, there's a six point seven percent mill levy increase, just from those two entities.
Right, so like that fifty point one six, six five is a six point seven percent property tax increase.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, and as we start moving mills around and adjusting them other places, then, you know, that obviously starts to move.
Yeah, because that's the number I concentrate on when I'm trying to decide.
Yep.
How much to make that mill, is looking at it, looking at it that way.
And.
Because you see what the real dollar value of the number is.
And, and I.
Yeah, I, this, this one really threw me off when you pulled these out like that.
I'm pu, I'm pulling them out to get to a general fund discussion, Commissioner, but I, they're obviously all in the packet accordingly. So you can see every fund and how it's impacted by the twenty-four to twenty-five transition. Yep.
Yeah.
And then the overall percentage increase, because you do get into pretty significant mill levy increases when you, when you move down. When you move down that path.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
I'm all set now.
Okay.
Could I, could I just say, um, I'm known as being very fiscally conservative. And, but I hope that we can look at the needs and the income and not just get our heads totally fixed on what the mill levy rate is. I mean, sometimes that just really, and let's see what, what we need to do to run the city efficiently. And, um, properly so that all of our citizens are safe and healthy and have good roads. And, um, and see what income we have. I think so often we just get so, you know, the mercury goes bizarre up two mills and, you know, what does that really mean to people? Um, just, just, I hope we cannot just get fixated on the mill levy.
But I think in order to have those conversations, we're gonna have to give ourselves the leeway of having, of, of going to the highest. I mean, I kind of wish you would have put six on here so that we.
Oh, I can create.
Could you add another column, please? And then that way we, we didn't just, um, choose the very highest, um, option that you gave us. I just, I just think we need to give ourselves the leeway to explore, like Karen was saying, and not, um, not kind of be in the scramble or, or, or make-it-work mode right off the, the start. We need to. I, I like that idea of not focusing on the mill levy, focusing on what is it, what does it take? If we have to, we can kind of work backwards too.
And how do we prioritize, how do we prioritize the things that we really think are very important? And are we willing to say, well, that's, my priorities are gonna change?
Yeah, almost without really looking at the dollar amounts, figure out what those priorities are, add in the dollar amounts.
But unfortunately for the resolution we need to pass tonight, in order to conform with the, the calendar set by the state. We do need to pick one of these numbers.
Right, and, and my suggestion would be to pick, I mean, not the highest now, because I think there's an additional one that Jason just added, no.
Only showing you half of it.
I mean, I would go, my, my opinion would, would go with the, the four point two three six mills, just to give us the leeway. Um, knowing that we can always come down if that's the, the option. Um, but Jason looks more nervous now that I'm saying that out loud, which is making me.
I appreciate the comments about just, you know, what it takes to run the city and deliver the services. I'm, I'm very concerned with where our revenues and expenditures are, right? I mean, it, it, we've had this four million dollar conversation. Our expenditures are, are exceeding our revenues by four million dollars. Well, if you want to know what it takes to run the city the way we ran it, with a four million plus, it's anywhere between five and seven and a half percent above that. I mean, it's another quarter, I, it, it's, it's a lot of money to do, we're growing the four million dollar gap. And, and we, all our conversations have been about trying to level that out in terms of reducing expenditures, increasing revenues. I, we can sit here and tell you the thirty, thirty-eight million, thirty-nine million we spent in twenty twenty-three. We, you know, this year we had a seven percent increase on top of that. And we've had to cut things in order to maintain where we were in twenty twenty-three. If we go into twenty twenty-five with an approach of, we want to do capital improvements, we want to pay our people, we want to buy, buy some vehicles and equipment and replace them on, on the schedule that we have. We're talking about increases, not.
Right.
Not decreases.
I know. What do you think we just said that didn't meet that?
It's the comment of not focusing on the, the mills, but focusing on what it takes to actually run this place.
Oh, but I think it was like, that's like, to, to what Karen was saying is the discussion and the conversation around the mills and the panic of like, I think that was encouragement to all of us of like, don't, don't look at the mills right now, like, I, I think it's give us leeway. Go and look at the budget, and if that's the budget, we match the mills to what we need for the budget.
Understood, and.
But now, but I feel like you.
You just don't have very many options on the revenue side other than the mill levy. You just don't. But on the expenditure side, we've talked about a number of other things you can do to bring that number down. The mill levy is, yeah, it's, it's a major, it's why we've shown them, it's a major piece of getting to a twenty twenty-five budget where we can provide those services.
What I said was agree with you.
I agree.
Okay, because I'm gonna throw my penny.
Yeah.
My. She's armed and dangerous. Um, my concern is if we go with your proposed scenario, column five or J. That, I like the, I. What people are going to fixate on for the next two months is their property taxes are going up. I agree, Peter, we should be transparent and say, yes, we think they are going up. Would it give us enough room to consider actual needs if we were to, um, go with the proposed three point two three six increase, which would land us right back in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three territory?
I was, I was actually gonna suggest that, Susan, um, you know, or even say, just put it at a flat fifty-two. That's a little north of ten percent, which is significant. Um, and, and, and folks are going to, we're gonna hear, hear, hear from folks about that. It's, we need to be financially responsible with what we need to run the city. I, I, we, and we need to balance the need to run the city with the desire for lower taxes. I, I totally understand that, but we need to do it responsibly. Um, and so, but, so I think, you know, if we put it at the fifty-two or even fifty-two, you know, the, you know, fifty-two one six five. It does, it does give us some, some limits, um, and, and, and kind of meets folks in the middle a little bit. I understand what, 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 uh, Jamie and, and Karen, it is so late, I can't remember anybody's names. Jamie and Karen are saying is like, you know, let's just not max it's out, but, but take the higher option and work down from there.
Peter, I think the problem is we don't know how much money we're gonna need.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, yeah, there'll be people upset, there'll be people upset if you raise it one mill, if you raise it two mills, if you raise it, you know, you're gonna hear.
If we raise a zero, they'll be upset because the valuations are going up.
We were elected to represent the people of Manhattan and most of the people I represent know to have a government that does provide you with the services you need and the park and recs you need and that kind of thing, it costs money. So it's up to us, I think, you know, put, plug in the high number and then when we come down, we'll be heroes. Well, seriously, I mean, the mercury will go, oh my gosh, you know, um, I, I mean, sure, people are gonna send us notes, but so what? I mean, we just explained to them, this is the cost of doing business and we have to pay our people. We don't have enough people in finance and so our bonds cost us more money. We've got to figure a way to make this government efficient enough that we're not, not buying things that, you know, running trucks that we are in the shop all the time, that kind of thing. You don't want your snowplows constantly falling apart. But I, I really don't think, Susan, um, worrying about public pressure on this is anything that we need to even.
I, I disagree. I mean, I, we've just seen a tremendous, maybe not a tremendous outcry, but certainly a pretty vocal outcry from significant members of our community about the aquatic center. We have been hearing, we still have not made a decision about whether there will be a sales tax initiative on the ballot. People have these in their minds. They're, Pete, it's very difficult to sit and have a one-to-one conversation with everybody in this community to explain what does the sales tax mean? And what are the implications if we carve off park and rec for the general fund? I, it's, people are going to glom onto the least common denominator and the, the scariest part of what we say. And they're not going to wait for us to backtrack because we've been backtracking on these other issues for seven months. And we still haven't persuaded people that these are good ideas. Once we take the genie out of the bottle, we can't get it back in. And if we say we're gonna increase, I can't, the mill levy by four and a half percent. When the newspaper just reported to great headlines that fraction of a percent that the county is, is, uh, going to introduce. I think we're setting us up, ourselves up for just, I, I just think it's gonna be an uphill battle. I, I think we, we need to try to find a little compromise, uh, now and work within those parameters.
Yeah, oh, go ahead, Karen.
I think the response to the, the indoor water thing was that people did not like the place it was or the idea of a giant rec complex. I don't think it had much to do, quite frankly, with, um, with the costs as much as those, but on the other hand.
I think it had a lot to do with the cost.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I disagree, Karen.
Well, I mean, the cost because it was gonna be this incredibly sixty million dollar thing in a place with, the, anyway, but, okay.
And it took three months of discussing that to come to the point where Aaron was able to say in public, it could be a phased project where we do forty million to begin with and then another forty million somewhere down the line. Three months of conversations. I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to set ourselves up to be having those conversations around this issue.
So I, I think there's a fine line that we're gonna dance where, um, enough outcry makes the whole process very inefficient and makes it so that we can't move forward because, because we are dealing with some of that. I, I think my other thought is, and something I, I personally try to balance is what's the majority voice versus what's just the loudest voice? Because, because those aren't the same thing. Um, I do want to point out, and I'm probably gonna poke a bear on this one, but if you look in the audience, there's no, there are people here. I, I mean, but, um.
There are no, there's no public.
There is one person from the public present.
So I, I do think that, that ha, I mean, in my mind, that, that has to, to take in consideration. People chose to, I mean, there were people here, I'm not blaming those people who left, I think that they left saying, you know what? They've got this, they'll, they'll figure this out. I, I think for me, it's also not, we've looked a little bit at the budget. I say a little, I mean, it feels like a lot right now that we've been looking at it. Um, I, I just have so much trouble setting that, uh, that ceiling. I think my question is like, are we looking, uh, when I say we, like, and this is a question in Peter and Susan, that, that five, or that fifty-two for the mill levy, because that's what it was in twenty-two and twenty-three, I think we have to recognize that we lost ground when we went, you know, we've got to make up a little bit. I do wonder if we're not liking the fifty-three because it's the highest number. I probably should have spoken about that before we, we had this of like, you know, we could have put ten extra mills on, I mean, no, we, I mean, we could, Jason would have gotten a lot of angry emails at that point. I, I guess I just don't want us to just reject the fifty-three, and I don't think either of you are saying this, but I think just talking more about why the fifty-two, is where you're more comfortable and kind of giving some of that discussion. I, I will say, the reason why I'm at the fifty-three is because I want the flexibility to feel like we are going to make the best decisions for the city as a whole. And, and anytime we're limiting that, that's where I feel like, I, I just don't want our hands to be tied. But like I said at the beginning, there is this fine line where enough public outcry and it makes it so that we can't make decisions, that we can't move. I mean, I can't think of how many times we've spent personally talking to everyone about indoor, you know, all of the different things. A lot of that was a misunderstanding that a lot of people had, but, um, it did take time, it did take involvement and it meant we couldn't work on other things. So it's that line, so, and there's nothing to say we couldn't meet in the middle, right, Jason?
John, do you have any comments you'd like to weigh in on?
Well, I do approach it differently. I look at it, what is the percent increase, um, that I willing to raise taxes? And I'm not willing to raise them more than, uh, seven percent, let's say, really my number's six, but gotta make up for the police department budget. So that, these scenario, all these scenarios are way over. What, um, I would support. And I don't like setting a number real high, because that takes the pressure off during the budget to, to really get down to business. And, and, you know, coming up with those creative plans to get to the number. I don't want to have that leeway. I want to be, I want to, you know, crunch this thing down. So, I mean, that's highly unlikely I'm gonna, the way I see this conversation going, that I'm gonna, uh, vote for the scenario that's picked.
So John, when you're at seven, that's putting you at fifty point five roughly, I'm making up math number, what is?
Yeah, yeah, you're, you're, you're in somewhere like that.
Jason, you shook your head like that wasn't.
The six point seven was at fifty point one six five, so.
Yeah.
And remember, when you see those mill decrease that happened in that, that year, taxes still went up. I forget what it was, but, you know, the paper still had fun with that one because we still increased taxes, even though the mill rate went down.
But we were able to.
And they went up disproportionately on residential people because our commercial values didn't raise that much. That's the one thing, Jason, do we ever get that from the county of what the difference was between residential and commercial?
I know we asked for it, I don't know if we. I know we asked for it, I don't know if we've received it from the appraiser's office, John, but we'll continue to track it down.
But we had an influx of COVID money to make that possible, and we don't have that. And so, you know, even with 3.2, we're not really back to the levels of 22 or 23 without some kind of influx of dollars from our carryover, you know. I, I mean, I, I just think if, if we go with, just go with a flat four, and then we can do our very best to, but it would give us the flexibility that we need. I don't know what, how much we need, because we haven't really seen a lot of the major monies like, you know, coming in and asking yet. And, and I'm not entirely sure what our income is gonna be, you know, I mean, we're just trying to pick this number out of the sky to protect us from whatever decisions we are forced to make.
Yeah, you know, this is really, it's an interesting exercise, and, well, kind of, yeah, I mean, we, we do have to make this decision before we are even setting our budget. And it's, it's even really not even a decision, it is kind of a philosophy, are we going to, you know, are we going to restrict ourselves now before we see anything? And I am kind of leaning towards that not being the best idea. You know, yes, we are going to be responsible with, with these tax revenues. We, we have to be, but that's, that's a subjective opinion of what responsibility. So, yeah, I mean, and really, all we're doing is deciding what number we're gonna put in, in this resolution that isn't binding at all, except for that we can't go higher than it. Yeah, so I, yeah, I guess it would, is, is just a four mil increase, so, you know, 52.929, I mean.
How about 3.999?
Yeah.
Susan, I, I know, I mean, you felt pretty strongly about the 52, and the, this is just, I mean, you don't have to answer this one for me, but is this the, are you, are you associating that, just getting us back to 2023, are you thinking of that per se? Like, can you, do you mind, like?
It was, yeah, no, it was just saying that we were stepping back to the limit, the levels in 22 and 23. Just, I just thought that might be a little bit more palatable for some people, that, you know, we were not forging forward with a huge increase. And I, I completely, Karen, I don't disagree with your perspective, Peter also, you know, with, look, this is my first rodeo, I, I, we're doing this blind. We still haven't seen a lot of information, but trying, trying to convey that message in a way that we're not going to have people in here with torches and pitchforks is uncomfortable and difficult.
I do think clarifying when we're saying we haven't seen anything, it, I just wanna clarify, that's, that's not a mark on, on anyone in the city, it is, it is the way this process is designed that is not how I think any of us would.
It's less than ideal.
It's, it is less than ideal, just the, the process and the dates and the timelines when all of these things have to exist, and, and there's so many moving parts, revenue stream, I mean, sales tax, like, we're kind of constantly seeing that this year, I think we're still projected to have less revenue, Rena, than what we initially thought.
I just interject that every, every county and city is doing this.
No, no, no.
A lot of counties, they're gonna get their revenue neutral rate, other cities are figuring it out.
I know, I wanted to make sure that, that we were being clear that it, it's, when people pick up that thing, it's not that the city hasn't shown us X, Y, and Z yet, it's that, that's not where they're at, it's the whole process, it's every county, every city is going through the same process.
Yeah, I think sadly, the, it's very difficult to educate the public, and any mill levy will be grasped upon as the end of the world. But this really is a state legislative burden that they have put upon us to come up with these numbers in, in a way that local and county governments are very tired of being forced to do, and I think many other cities and counties are in the same position. I would argue that our, our county has quite a huge carryover and might be, there are some things that they could do and possibly raise their mill levy just a little bit, get some things done. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what the number should be, I just want us to have enough of a cushion that should we find we have to expend finances, we aren't just, you know, tied down. I mean, but, you know, 3.5, 3.9, I don't really care, you know, I just don't want us to, to have to come back in, in September and think, oh, my gosh, how are we possibly going to support the finance department or something like that?
I mean, I do think there's that encouragement to keep cutting expenses, or people are wanting to see us make sure those expenses are being managed and being reduced or, or cutting. I think if we go with that 52 number, realistically, I'm worried that we're gonna feel pressure even at that, and that number's gonna end up at the 51. And, and I think that's where my bigger fear comes from, is that I don't think it gives us any, any, I'll say any negotiating room or wiggle room afterwards. And right now, when you look at it, it, it makes sense, it's reasonable within 2020, or based on 22, 23, to land there. I just think we'll get pressure if we start there to continue to decrease.
And I think one thing that's, that's, having been through the budget thing a few times, one of the sad things is, at the end, we often get down to sort of what I call nitpicking, let's cut 5,000 off the MAC, you know, I mean, I think it's really important that we start out the whole budget thing with a philosophy of what we think and at what level various services should be funded. And so not to, you know, just get to a point at the end where we're trying to look good on, on the mill levy, you know, just, we've, how can we run this government as efficiently as possible and as inexpensively as possible while still providing a high level of services that everybody in Manhattan expects?
Yes.
They don't, you know, you heard the people who were unhappy about the potholes this winter, and I think, you know, if, at that point, they might've been willing to go up six mills, we could solve that issue.
Commissioners, is there a motion to approve this resolution and at what level?
I mean, I'm gonna throw out a number, and I'm just gonna, well, Jason moved my screen on me, so it's hard for me, can you?
You want that spreadsheet back?
Do we, yeah, do we need to state the actual mil, oh, now I gotta do math. I was gonna say a four mil increase, but I don't wanna.
Oh, that's.
That's the 52.
Forty, 52.929.
52.929, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that's.
I will second that if you wanna make that a motion.
Hmm, Peter, what are you?
What are you asking?
I mean, I didn't make a motion, I was, I was talking out loud.
Oh, your number is 52.929.
No.
Let's make it some odd number.
Yeah.
3.9.
Fifty, what was it, 52.9? I'm, thank you, Jason, 52.929, so I would, do I have to make a motion to, what's it up to say now?
The resolution itself, you're adopting a resolution that identifies the mill levy, not to exceed.
So I, motion.
I'm sorry, I thought we were, we had to do how many mills fits, yeah.
That's what I was trying to figure out.
You did a great job.
Motion to adopt the resolution with a total mill levy of 52.929 to allow for the 2025 budget to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Second.
Commissioner Minton and Commissioner has.
Public comment.
Oh, yes, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. I'm not sure if shrugs are categorized as public comment, but thank you. Commissioner Minton has moved, and Commissioner McCullough has seconded the move to approve Resolution Number 071624D regarding the city commission's intent to levy a property tax exceeding the revenue neutral rate and setting a public hearing. The rate that is proposed that will be included in that resolution is 52.929 mills, and there will be a public hearing on September 3, 2024, at 6:00 PM at City Park, at City Hall. Let's have it in the park.
The City Park, yeah.
Clerk, City Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchek?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
No.
Motion carries four to one.
Thank you, everyone. Before we close, I would like to just remind people, there was one item on the consent agenda, or there will be no, the commission will hold a special meeting next Tuesday, July 23, to accommodate our interviews of candidates for the city manager position. That special meeting will allow us to go into executive session with the individual candidates as we conduct those interviews. There will be no public meeting, no regularly scheduled public meeting at 6:00 PM next week. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Show move.
Commissioner McCullough has moved to adjourn our meeting at 9:43, and Peter, Commissioner Opel has seconded. Brenda, will you take the role, please?
Mayor Adamchek?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Minton?
Yep.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. The, at 9:43, the meeting is now adjourned.